For the rest of the morning. First one is just a review of our county sort of pay and classification. I think a good place to start for this is in your budget books on page, uh, section five, page four. So, uh, we could pull it up on the screen, but I think it would be harder to see by far than what you've got in your budget book. So again, section five, page four, a good place to start. This table has a lot of good information in it, uh, but sometimes you have to sift at it for a little while before you figure it all out. We've basically got five years' worth of, well, four years of actual staffing, full-time and part-time, and what is proposed for next year. I found it interesting to go along the, the total line at the bottom of the table and look at kind of what happened to the total number of positions year over year. So, starting in twenty twenty-one, we went from three thirty-one to three forty-six. And that was, uh, thirteen positions, I'm looking so detention was a big part of that, nine-one-one, uh, and a few others. Then from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, we went from three forty-six to three seventy-five. And you can see, um, down below, uh, the footnotes, so the third footnote down, uh, we added a deputy clerk position, animal control, finance tech, sheriff's deputy, um, and three additional part-time bailiffs. That doesn't seem like it adds up. Oh. I see, I see. I see. So, what looks like a giant table, see, I'm still getting used to this table. What looks like a huge jump in positions is really just us starting to account for the part-time positions that we had in the, in the employee count. So, the true number, right, of, of sort of comparable number of full-time positions only went up, let's see, by four, like-ish, uh, that year. And then, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, so in the current year, uh, thirteen positions. And you can see, uh, in that fourth footnote, what those are, right? We have, uh, a grants officer, yet we're only paying half of that. A management analyst, uh, who's valued to us, I hope, has been on full display. Emergency management, we had the deputy fire marshal. And again, you all have seen some of the evidence of us catching up with our, our fire inspections. This was something that, when I saw evidence of how far behind we were doing required inspections of businesses in particular, um, you know, that's, that's one bad event away from a really terrible kind of headline, right? County, you know, missing, you know, hundreds of business fire inspections and one of them burns down and kills somebody. We're in, we're, we're in the doghouse, um, and we have caught up significantly. We added in the current year the assistant finance director position, which I'm happy to say is now advertised. And I hope to have, uh, a good helper onboard for, for Jennifer before too long.
Is Susan still helping?
Yes. We added a recruitment specialist. It's hard to know how many HR people are, is the right number of HR people. What I did know though is when you're operating with two and you lose one, for example, trying to run all of our HR operations on one person is also a recipe for disaster. We're running recruitment hiring processes, we're doing background checks, we're doing new hire orientation, terminating people and offboarding people. It's a lot, uh, it's definitely, uh, you know, requires two to three people. And when you anticipate, you know, that you may be down a person from time to time, as we are right now, uh, that, that you still have at least two people kind of carrying that load. IT, right, when I came onboard for a long time, after I started, we really only had three people in IT. Again, when you consider that, that pretty much all of the county's work is conducted, you know, at least in part, if not entirely electronically. And you think about what we rely on in terms of our ability to work and communicate remotely and electronically, three positions was not nearly enough. And Chris, I think, um, we have a couple of positions like this at the county where there are some people who have been here for a long time who are shouldering a load that you, you probably could not find another person in the world to carry that load. Chris was working in the middle of the night doing server maintenance, right, getting up at two in the morning, three in the morning, uh, keeping our network running because you can't do some of that stuff during the day when people are, are working on it, making sure that our IT security is up to, so we, um, added a server administrator position. A couple of social services positions and a, uh, a tax position that we were kind of going into the, the final throes of revow. So, we definitely did add some positions in the current year. Current year to what's proposed for next year, as you saw a week ago, is three new positions, one of which is totally funded by permit revenue and the other two of which are funded fifty-plus percent by DSS reimbursement. That's about as tight as I can make that. There were a lot of additional positions requested. I will say in, in particular, right, if, if we have any prayer of managing any version of our capital improvement plan, having more than Scott back there, right? Kind of, um, available to help manage all that is, you know, is, is an absolute necessity. There's too much there, too much bidding, too much complexity, too much project management. And never mind some of the other things that I need, got available to do, which would be to help, for example, evaluate some of the capital needs that we're being confronted with at the schools and at Anne Scramble Community College. We historically have had to take quite a lot on faith from those organizations. So, again, if, if we, if we hope to move forward with some version of our CIT and, and do a better job of, of mining store with regards to some other investments that are, that by Sky are ours to make, I think that, that additional position is also, uh, more or less a necessity. But I will stop there. Again, there's a, there's a lot of detail kind of in this table and see what questions people may have with regard to our, our county staffing.
So, if I'm reading correctly, since two thousand twenty-one, added thirty-six full, full-time.
So, let's see, if you add the part-time, you get to...
Right, I'm just, I'm just talking about full-time.
Right, but you have to, I have to...
Three thirty-one and then...
Oh, I see. Twenty, is that what you said?
Thirty, I, I counted thirty-six. Full-time.
It looks to me like you go from three forty-six to three sixty-seven, which is twenty-one.
Right.
From, from twenty-one.
I, I meant from twenty twenty. From the, for the origination.
I see.
So, so it's five years.
Yeah.
So...
And would you, um...
Mr. Cummings.
Yep.
So, based on your assessment, are you still operating lean?
I think so. You know, and, and you can kind of go down, right, if you go department by department in those two, that's the first column and the third to last column that, that Russ is looking at, right? Uh, we added two in admin, right? That was a deputy clerk and a management analyst, right? I mean, and, and we can consider kind of what, whether we thought, all of you have opinions on this, I'm sure, right? Do you think that was good for the county, necessary for the county?
It was. Do, do we still have that?
Say again?
Do we still have that position?
Which position?
The deputy clerk.
That's Ms. Evans, Karen Evans. Okay, she's our deputy clerk. We added two animal control officers. I, I've really been impressed with the number and complexity of animal control needs in this county. They are widespread and there are a lot of people out there who really expect animal control to be onboard twenty-four-seven and ready to respond. You may recall from my, and we're not truly twenty-four-seven, but the expectation is there. So, we have people on call all of the time, uh, you know, if, if there is an extreme animal control emergency. But I, I do not think that there's, there's water, right, or fluff in that department.
In that, in that department, animal control, did we, uh, get the high-led, uh, organization?
So, Carlos has been upgraded to a deputy director position. That, we, that mid-year this year?
Okay. Just even a very good job.
Okay. All right. Also, do we still have that officer so they can get that, uh, who, uh, whatever wants and whatever stuff for animal...
Right, not very much. So, on an as-needed basis, I mean, we were meeting with them the other day and, and when they have, um, kind of really serious situations, they are able to call that person in. But, but mostly that deputy has not been assigned full-time by the sheriff to animal control. He's just been pulled off.
Where, where did the funding come from? Come out of animal control or sheriff's office?
I mean, in both cases, the funding comes out of our county general fund, so that's where it comes from.
When that, when that position was originally set up, set up, obviously, dogfighting. That idea behind that full-on staffing at animal control, that deputy, that, that, that would be well sold. If it's not the case, that position, by the way, might be...
And my understanding, when we created that position, it was supposed to be as needed on an emergency basis for sheriff's office. Rest of the time, it, it was assigned to animal control for exactly the purpose that Karen...
That was the option.
I thought, I thought it was... With the authority of the sheriff, but in the department of the animal.
Right, well, that's what it's basically saying.
Yeah. Like, he's, he's under the authority, it was supposed to be under the authority of the sheriff, but it was supposed to be pretty much a full-time position with animal control. And if there was an emergency need in the sheriff's department, they were, uh, at the time, the staffing was down. Sheriff's, sheriff's department had what, about forty percent, forty-five percent staff at that time. And then it was supposed to be as needed on an emergency basis for, for a deputy position. Otherwise, it was designated to animal control. And now the sheriff's department is ninety, ninety-five percent, uh, staff. It seems that this deputy had been returned to animal control. That they're using it as only an emergency basis for animal control. Exactly opposite of what it was designated for.
I think what I would suggest, and I have talked with the sheriff a number of times about this, I think you all appreciate at this point that legally, once, once the position is, a, a sworn deputy position is kind of in place, that position is, is under the sheriff's authority. On the other hand, I think what I would suggest, a- and it's also the case that animal control doesn't need this position eight hours of everything, right? But they need them more than they have been getting, uh, from the position. So, I think there's, there's some fertile ground for, for achieving more of the purpose that commissioners has specified. And I think, kind of similar to the way that we've been talking about our SROs and accountability mechanisms, is actually in conversation with the superintendents, they're trying to figure out a manageable and relatively straightforward way of accounting for the, the hours of the SROs at the various schools. Maybe a Google sheet that, that folks have, have access to where, where kind of the, the weekly hours and deployment of some particular staff people can be tracked and, and looked at, viewed by a variety of different folks. Would be a good way to move forward next year and, um, you know, Matt Kots is, uh, our animal control director, is understandably cautious about kind of taking his own battles with the sheriff, right? Uh, cause he needs that relationship to work as well. But I think for my part, uh, there are ways that I can continue pushing and trying to drive some more accountability for, to make sure that that position is available to animal control whenever they need that person.
It also... That's...
Not if it's a sworn deputy.
That's exactly what we thought we needed for the kind of issue dealing with animals. The amount of deputized. The thing, the thing, commissioners are in a, in a bad spot here because the whole premise they were playing was we needed deputy, obviously, for law enforcement purposes, search warrants, things of that nature for animal control, yet it's not being utilized in that position. So, the mindset is, is that that was the purpose of that, that thing. So, I, I think however you can manage it with the sheriff, but I think the question is, is that, you know, he controls, we control FTE, he controls, uh, the budget one providing. So, I think what I hear from Mr. Karen, Mr. Gooch and others is that that was not the intention and that if that's not going to be what happens, then that, if FTE needs to be taken off the books and then, uh, when we need somebody, we'll make a request through normal channels to the sheriff's department to respond to that. Is that perfect? No. But I think the mission is shared that that's going to be a full-time use for the animal control. And I think we'd have support in the board for full-time use without condition. Other than, other than exigent circumstances, which, which would be a significant crime scene, a significant incident, huge drop in numbers of personnel, um, and in that case, obviously, the board wants law enforcement to be a priority. But I think you have to go back to, to the genesis of that position to understand how to...
Did I interpret that correctly?
Yes.
I think you're a hundred percent right. The way it was sold to us is animal control responds to somebody's got a bunch of people, all about something. Those things always go hand in hand with other nefarious activities, you know, and... Animal control is powerless to many things about it. They're going out and being on property or whatever, you know, legal jurisdiction about pro-operation, it might be going on. Legal, not quite, it might be going on. I mean, those are the kind of things, you know, they're, they're occurring more than we think.
Well, I mean, we just, that last dangerous dog hearing, we just, uh, it, there was two dogs that should have been taken into custody. But because there was no officer there, those dogs were left there. I mean, not that the animal wouldn't have died, but the animal did die and it made people even more, you know, well, my puppy didn't do that.
And it, I mean, I don't want to get off topic too much, but we're talking about law enforcement perspective. We spend a, a lot of money, we're schools, we have no purpose function, uh, they plan around perimeter security. Throughout the school today, the staff are, who are not supposed to be, are SRO, we make a group that forces plans put in place. They're used to, got an execution, they're supposed to be, they're sold. And claims useless because it's not being enforced. And you think that it would be the SRO's responsibility. We should have pardon citations. If they're too lazy to watch from one side of the building to the other because they want to park most of their classrooms, it blows the heck out of any kind of, there would be a breach that happened. The first thing we do is just set them a couple of car alarms where they're not supposed to be. And start a bag of chips on fire. And next thing you know, you got a teacher coming out the wrong door.
And kind of getting back to the animal control thing. And when we were having discussions around having a deputy basically assigned to them, a animal control officer doesn't have the power, authority to arrest people. They don't have the power, authority to, uh, execute a search. So, if you go out to a situation, you got a deputy there with animal control. If they see something that can give them probable cause to commit a search, they can, uh, can, uh, you know, detect illegal activity or suspected illegal activity much better than animal control officer. And that was part of the reasoning behind this. And we witnessed the way the sheriff's department has administered this, this position was to make us think that the administration of SRO officers will be different. That you'll have assigned SRO officers that are taken off of other...
We do have, we do have a, an SRO conversation to pick up for, for later in the session. I think it will help get to the bottom of that. We have created, uh, an SRO reserve that the sheriff will only be able to access if those SROs are at the school. And back to, um, the animal control officer, I think what I would recommend is, is continuing that position, uh, but putting some similar kinds of accountability mechanisms in place and some better tracking of how that officer's employed. I think the, the flip side of not having a deputy, right, and, and putting the sheriff in the position of, of being able to say whether we wanted to or not, took my position away, I can't, I can't help you out right now, I'm too, I'm too thin, right? We don't really want that outcome either. In our meeting the other day, Matt pointed out an interesting, um, kind of thing, which shows the value of, of the deputy. Uh, they were trying to get into a house to talk to somebody who had a bunch of dogs. And when it was just animal control officers, the person wouldn't answer the door at all and didn't have to, right? But when a deputy is knocking on your door, it pretty much opened up. They knew who the person was there. And so, there are a lot of different ways, even if there's nothing critical, right, you're not arresting anybody, right? Right, having that deputy there does make quite a lot of difference in, in helping to, right, so that the animal control folks don't have to go out to that same house a fifth or a sixth or a seventh time knocking on the door trying to talk to the owner, right? Deputy's with him, door gets open, conversation gets had and, and we're able to kind of move that particular incident forward.
And I think there is a high road to all this. And I think during the time commissioners, cabinet, you're exactly right. I think look, the staffing challenges, I think there's a personal... Like, that's what I think revisiting these things would probably... I, I, I agree. At the end of the day is that, I don't know how you can, where the SRO program is all through the school system or what's all through the school system, where you have means of attachment, you can, you can measure it like that. I don't know how you do that from a assigned deputy that is under, lawfully under the sheriff's umbrella.
I think we get one crack at it a year, right? When, when we approve the budget and approve the FTE.
Well, I think, I think that's exactly what the commissioner was saying, was that we've got to have a firm commitment from the sheriff that it's going to be used the way it was intended. And, and, and hear that from him and not see it at a later date any other than...
I, I have a good idea. If you do a contract, sure, obviously, we don't think through that, but if you do a contract, like... And the sheriff is coming on Wednesday morning too, right? And this is a question we can, we can push him. Are you prepared to commit that position more fully and as fully as they have any need for it to animal control? Okay, uh, so, again, we were kind of looking at, uh, the first column and the third to last column. Rita pointed out there were, there were a large increase in number of, there were six new detention officers, one in economic development, uh, you all created, again, that recruitment director, that middle position. Just as an aside, uh, Joe Stallings, I think, requested that I upgrade the admin assistant position. And I told him, I don't think there's money in next year's budget. I, I've, I've packed as much stuff in there as I can. He thinks he can carve a little money out of that middle salary, apply it to the bottom position and get the two positions that he needs. So, he's figuring out a kind of net neutral way of, of getting the two positions that he... Emergency communications went up to telecommunications, emergency management went up to the deputy fire marshal, finance went up, and assistant finance director, human resources went up to recruitment specialist, IT went up to server administrator. Inspections, uh, went up, a, uh... Oh, proposed for next year, so that's the new one, right? But again, funded by revenue. Parks and grounds went up by, what was that? Stephanie Hanford's, uh, position. She's still working kind of part-time for us, even though she's taking the job, she's helping to hold the fort down while we recruit. Okay. She's been helpful.
Which one then?
The venue and activity coordinator for Mark, Stephanie?
She rents this facility out and does the rentals that...
Yeah, Steph.
Yeah. So, she, she's left the county. She's helping us out part-time while we're waiting for a new position to, to start on the twentieth. Two in the sheriff's office, um, and I think one of those was the animal control position. Oh, and the pre-person, like...
We had an animal control quite a while back.
Well, we're looking at twenty twenty-one to twenty-four, twenty-five.
Put noted FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and FY twenty-two, twenty-three.
Third, uh, I actually, for example, Friday was, was seventy, then went one with the...
So, social services, you can see, is, is actually the largest single one, fourteen. Seven of those were the Medicaid expansion, which pay for themselves and, and handful of... Tax administration went from ten to eleven. So, again, you know, it, it's interesting when you go through it at a department by department level and consider the needs that, that drove those expansions. And, um, Russ, you know, back to your question, one, one area, for example, that, that gives pause, right? And, and I, I think I mentioned this in my recommended budget, facility management, facility maintenance, right? Gary and two helpers, right, are maintaining all of our, and, and some part-time cleaners maintaining all of our buildings, including the courthouse. And that is an area, right? And then Matt Eller left for, for double salary and, um, and we're down to two. And they're running mail around, sort of inter-office mail too. So, really, you've got one and a half FTEs, public shoot, all of that stuff. And Gary is one of those people who, you know, kind of, he's a kind of a complex person and it's, but it's a complex situation too, right? And on Christmas Eve, for example, when pipes burst at the public health building, he was there, right? And so, you can't buy people like that very easily. You can't find them very easily, have even, you know, kind of anywhere near that range of capabilities. And, uh, so we're, we're working to fill Matt's position. We are looking this spring, I think the, the cleaning situation, you all probably have heard from time to time about the sort of concerns about the cleaning in the courthouse, in our building, uh, and so forth. I think that, among other things, Gary has not really had the bandwidth to adequately supervise the part-time cleaners. I just don't think that was a situation that was really set up to work very well. And so, we're looking at an RFP. And so we're looking at an RFP for, we have some contract cleaning operations that are working really well in a number of our facilities. The tenants of the buildings, our staff are very pleased with the work. And so I think we'll be looking maybe at switching more of our buildings over to contract cleaners, which I think will result in better cleaning. I think it will, it will remove a burden from Gary that I don't think he was actually able to perform very well. Because he's off painting buildings.
He didn't have time.
Fixing pipes and whatever, and, and I don't think that was, it was, it wasn't reasonable to begin with. And it just didn't work.
Much stuff that we put on Gary. Gary doesn't have time.
He's running a truck around the county delivering and picking up election equipment, right?
Election, election, they, they put up, put up stuff all day. I don't know, they roll and then, and then turn around and take it, put all that stuff back. Gary don't have time. We need to, sooner or later, we're gonna burn him out. And he gonna walk up and say, I'm gone.
Do contract cleanings in that particular building, let's say the courthouse, then let's say Gancy comes in and he doesn't like the way that he goes to the contract cleaners. Yes, I don't think, no, we're just, that's the way that would work? Or would he didn't come back to us, to Gary, or to you, or to whoever, to remain and say, I'm not happy with it? Or does he have the direct responsibility to go to and say, not cleaning like I like?
You know, I think that kind of building supervisors probably can add a line to the company. But maybe a better answer to your question is, I think Scott's assistant director position is the kind of person that I would like overseeing a set of contracts like that, right? Somebody who has contract management capabilities, somebody who can sort of manage our relationship with that company. So there is a county staff person who has bandwidth and expertise in that kind of area, who can also be somebody that, so that it's not me, right? That Yancy is calling with, you know, the elevator dirty or the dust in the windows or whatever, right?
But the feedback would come from that person that is in that building daily. Correct, like Yancy, or the judges, or the.
What I'm hopeful is that it's, it's going well enough that there is no need for daily feedback, right? But if there's an issue.
But not daily, but you know what I'm saying? They come in and they said, look, we don't, we're just not pleased with the way it's going.
There will be an established protocol that doesn't come straight to me. You know.
But is Scott's area, is that, I mean, doesn't he have enough things that he needs help on to add that on to his? Is that something we need to do?
Well, it's not something that I want Scott doing either, right? But, but this next level position, right?
But he needs enough, another body. I mean, we can't, we can't leave him either.
You get three more commissioners who ask for another position for Scott, I think that might be warranted, happy to add him in.
I, I need some.
I agree. It is a lot to manage. I'm not disagreeing with you, but I, but I think that that's the kind of position that I would want managing building cleaning contracts. It might cross numerous county facilities.
If we go to that ground, go to the contract cleaning.
Right? And facilities management itself, Gary's option might also fall under that.
It's all kind of how. But, you know, just Scott, that's. I mean, Scott's got enough to do, I mean, just for what I've asked him to do, to keep himself busy, not much less two people. And if we add on keeping buildings clean and that kind of stuff too, I'm just, I mean.
Again, my, my view is that that's, that would be part of the assignment of a new position that we're giving this company. Would be to oversee that kind of.
Just manage that.
I would put stuff on people's head.
That's, that's what I'm concerned about.
That's my, that's my concern. I mean, you know, if you keep putting loads on, 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 I, I, I'm. I, 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 I love you, Dylan. And you keep putting, because we keep putting stuff on, gosh, the party.
I think any position there's a migration in how we look at general services. I already, what I, what I do for the county specifically. I think the long vision is that general service would migrate into facilities management, facilities construction, facilities operations, which is somewhat of a model of a shrouding typical counties, where everything that I'm doing for project coordination and project administration is handled through general services. I do. Now, we're not there yet. We've got a lot of work to do. The conversation that I have with the administration is that myself, as well as this assistant director, would help the county move in that direction slowly but surely.
So are you okay with this?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it depends on our work. I mean, there's so many things you can do and do well. Get to the point where you're doing, increase that plateau, the quality goes down.
Right.
My quality has been stretched here for a while, but I applaud the reason to get succession plan in place for myself. We hopefully can open up some, some opportunities to assist general services and contract operations. RFP, commissioning RFPs for services, contract services. Probably providing some administrative help if they've been lacking.
I just remember my very first budget review, we're getting up there and talking about how we need another body in there. And that was eight years ago.
I don't think anybody would disagree with general services needs. You know, you can't, you can't administer yourself out of some issue. You need people that do work, actual work. Not that we don't do work, but you need worker bees. I think this is a step in the direction as we build general services capacity that needs to be in. They're maintaining thirty-two different facilities through, you know, cross-gram of county. Right now, two and a half people, one half, seven and a half plus. But we're starting at this stage and moving in that direction.
And I'll shut up. But combining the departments to be able to work with the efficiency of this current, if the process of that, yes, that's where we are. What else do we? What do they give us if we get some staff?
I tell you, business for this type of service is really increasing. I don't know in code if a lot of people started to get more, more, minded, but we've had some good experiences. And both monthly checks, I think, both of them big enough, it's almost turned it.
And I think that, that's where we kind of fell down. People had a infinitely extendable lead. And that's just, this is not a situation, right, where you get the results that you. Any, any more questions on, you know, those staffing expansions? And yes, I, I do think we are operating a pretty lean organ. I think about that survey we did, right? And how exhaustion came back as the number one concern of people. And what happens, you know, when they're at work may not be the only thing contributing to people's sense of exhaustion. But that, that I think is a real, that's a real phenomenon here. And I think that's something we have to pay attention to. You know, if we want to kind of run a sustainable organization.
How many square feet?
I looked, I looked back at a facility review that we did, and they're not all, right? This would include things like some sheriff substations, you know, like up in Oak Hill where there's a room there that's not using very much. But I think the total is around four hundred thousand square feet. And again, some of that is much more regularly utilized in other space. That's at least a good round figure. We probably added some things too since that was, that was done. I mean, think about new space, right, Mr. Watson's offices, right? We're adding a little bit. I wanted to take a, a quick gander through the salary schedules. Again, this is a good reminder on these next three pages that we now have three different salary schedules. We have the county kind of general salary schedule, we have DSS, and then we have public safety. One thing, right, just pick a midpoint of each one of those. Pick something kind of in the middle and look at the starting salary for those salary ranges. I think all of you have sort of been around long enough and are aware, kind of generally speaking, of what people, people make. So, you know, if, if you look at the bottom of those salary scales, you find yourself instantly wondering, who on earth could we recruit, right? To come here near the, near the starting minimum salary of some of those ranges. But even at, even in the middle of those salary ranges, right? Considering what people, talented people can make in the private sector. I think you start to realize why at the very least, you know, to get good people, we're having to kind of go significantly above the minimum in some of these salary ranges to get somebody to come work for the county. Commissioner, Dave.
I wish, this is our range of great fifty. That's what I'm looking at.
And I, I saw that too, and I looked, I'm not sure we have any grade fifties.
I, I.
Thank goodness, right?
I'm gonna ask you, do we have any?
I don't think my eighteen-year-old would work for that.
That's a great, the calculations start to speak on that. We don't have anyone in that range.
That's good.
My sixteen-year-old is making eighteen dollars an hour as a lifeguard this summer.
I, I looked at, I looked, I looked at this, I just asked myself, shoot. And that was my question, do we have anyone that agrees with this?
No, and thank goodness. But, but we do have, and I see Latoya and Megan are still here. We do have people working in DSS who qualify for food stamps, who qualify for other federal benefits. So, you know, again, I think to them.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. It is a shame. And, and I think so, whenever we start thinking to ourselves that maybe, right? And that's not everybody, obviously, there are people who make better money than that. But whenever we start thinking to ourselves that we are overpaying our staff or, or something like that, I think, thinking about that point or looking even in the middle of these pay ranges, there's nobody getting rich working in county government.
Especially me.
Especially.
And I say.
Especially considering.
I'll just say, Mr. Campbell, even with a little small nonprofit, not near the budget, but definitely, uh, would you look at, I had to ask, I ordered it advertised at the beginning. Not that we were gonna necessarily offer it just to get applicants. We had to advertise up to them. So I don't know where this thing is gonna end, salaries, and I'm kind of frightful for it. When we talk about doing budgets, but we're dealing with a real situation at that point, contract budget. Once it's set, when it's set in a staff state, it comes going back to you every year, you have a new budget.
It was interesting talking to Teresa Purrier, right, who's executive director. I got the sense, I, I think she likes her work here at the county. I mean, a nonprofit, all the medium-sized nonprofit sort of was able to offer her a salary that she couldn't recruit from being a director of a county department.
And for the boys and girls club department head in the county, that's sad. You know, because the boys and girls club, we all think of them as.
They're not rolling in money.
No. You know, and, and in fact, I remember when they were started and everybody was saying, that's gonna cost a lot of, a lot of money. But it's sad that she can go there and make more money than she's making as a department head.
Apparently, I talked to Tyrone, the, the regional supervisor, so her, her supervisor. And he asked her how much the, the increase was, because he does have some wiggle room in the state salary schedule to kind of counteroffer. And when she told him, he said he didn't bother. So, there you go, right? That, that's kind of what we're, we're even competing, we're having a hard time competing even with the nonprofit world in some ways. You can see, if you go on a couple of, you can see the part-time case schedule. You can see salary ranges for, and, and grades for specific positions. I don't know if there was anything in there that caught anybody's eye that they wanted to ask about.
Um, the only thing I throw out, I'm very sensitive to the talent that we're bringing on the people in the town. The only thing in my mind that kind of balled me up a little bit is that we've had a, we have a number of dedicated long-term who've been with us. And so in order to recruit someone sometimes, we have to do what we need to do to get them in. But I don't know how to ask it, how we could, some sense of consideration, right? For those people who, we'll call it a couple of names, but that, people who have been, that's my only thing. I have no problem with recruitment, or as you brought, I have to admit it. So how we do that going forward is a slight concern.
I agree. And, and on a case-by-case basis, you know, if, you know, we're not gonna bring somebody in at a higher salary than their supervisor, for example. So we, we will look at situations like that on a case-by-case basis and periodically make adjustments to other salaries around a new hire if, if that. Now, it, the other reason that you have to do it on a case-by-case basis is you might get somebody, a very senior position with a ton of experience coming in beneath the supervisor, who's actually a pretty inexperienced supervisor, pretty new in that position, right? So there are other things that kind of come into play beyond just longevity with the county. But I think we are pretty attentive to that need, and thank you for that. Uh, these hourly rates on section five, page eight are some of the rates that are proposed to be adjusted. I don't think these are the adjusted rates. They are the adjusted rates. Go ahead. Well, suffice to say that we may continue to have a little bit of work to do if, if we hope to continue to be able to recruit people into these positions. Yep. So are these the adjusted rate bulwark? Yes.
The rates of bulwark is last year, then eight, and part-time, ten, and thirty, seventy.
I think that's right. We did a mid, was it a mid-year or was it last year in the budget?
Uh, since you're talking about, we're gonna talk about bulwark. The day they set up, those people get paid, that, uh.
This came up.
Because last year they did, those people, us, every, all of us.
Two of them came to the board meeting, right? And they said, why are we only getting paid twenty-five dollars for five hours of setup or whatever? And I checked in with Tanya, and just to make a long story short, I said, please ignore that and pay them the approved hourly rate for however many hours it takes to set up. Because, you know, if we are effectively paying somebody five dollars an hour, we're probably in violation of laws that Jim won't want me to mention. So, right, we, we have these rates for a reason. And there was some historical decision, pay them twenty-five dollars for setup, that I think was no longer relevant. And since we had new hourly rates.
But, but that's exactly why we get people in there that, first of all, can't hear, can't see, can't, you know, and, and they're, they're trying to secure and do all these things. And I personally saw it when I worked the polls. In fact, I ran for county commissioner just to keep from working the polls. But it, it's just, it's sad, you know, when there's one person in there that's under sixty-eight to do everything. Because that's the only people that can afford to work for this amount of money.
I did one, made one correction, that there was a poll work increase that grounded on twelve. So last year was past, I had to remember that. But because we had increased them last year, so it was above that, well, ballots come out.
Of, of, or of elections, or just, and all of that.
They may just be runners, they may be out kind of enforcing fifty-foot boundaries at that time. There's a lot of moving around and paper delivering and ballots, you know, setting up tables. There's a lot of moving around and paper delivering and ballots, you know, setting up tables.
Because is that the, is that the judges?
No.
No, 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 those are just people running. But still, they're people that have to have cards, and they have to have driver's licenses.
You think about, you know, these part-time workers, they work different numbers of hours. They're allowed to work up to a thousand hours. Basically, they're allowed to work up to half-time. Each of these positions works a fair number of hours. The, the increases that we gave that are built into these rates cost us sixty-five thousand dollars, right? And they were, they were not, it's not uniform, so the same amount was not added to each hourly rate. We added in where we were having the most trouble recruiting people to do work. But, um, and you'll see, for example, the specialized court officer at the higher rate down there, twenty-two an hour as opposed to the, um, and I think the bailiffs had been at sixteen, got bumped to seventeen. Uh, retired folks that we were worried might not be able to stop somebody doing a swan dive over the dead. Eyes.
Twenty-two, oh.
Are, are the newer, higher-level bailiffs?
No, they're getting seventeen.
They get seventeen. They're just like, what do you have?
Telecommunicators, Rita was just saying, went from seventeen fifty to twenty. Um, you know, that's obviously a set of kind of preserve and, and positions that we need to have. Anything on there?
Let's read personnel policy. Do you have the discretion as the county manager, if there, if you're involved, Tanya, stating, I can't fill these positions, do you have some discretion to, um, to bump off a certain percentage?
Yeah, yes. And, you know, there, there are a lot of different varieties of that conversation, a number of which I have had in the last year and a half. Um, you know, recently, I think Jim got in touch on her behalf and said, Ms. Burnett needs more part-time positions. I thought she had two that were vacant, which turned out to be the case. There were two part-time positions that were vacant. Um, part of the question, and then there was another person who was in the process of, of leaving, uh, another person who had retired kind of effectively immediately after the March primary. So she was down to almost nobody. And that, I think part of the answer was, is here, that the hour, the hourly rate for the part-time position that we were paying just wasn't enough to recruit anybody, never mind somebody really capable of doing the work. Um, and what we ended up doing, this finally got executed last week, uh, was a contract with a, a temp agency that specializes in election work. But the cost, and we had so many vacant positions, right, uh, that we had enough lap salary to pay, I think it was, they paid their workers nineteen per hour and billed us twenty-six, maybe? That was the, the sort of the cut that the staffing agency took. But at this point, right, with, with a lot of election stuff coming up, we didn't have, there were no good alternatives at that point. So I kind of made an executive decision, we'll work through that staffing agency, and at least in the short run, get some people on board who are capable of doing election work. And, but then, we also need to revisit, how, how well are we paying these part-time and other permanent positions? Because she had two people who were, if I remember correctly, maybe mid-thirties, the, the, the two, one of whom left despite the, the pay adjustment, and the other one. You know, these were people who were near retirement, who were making thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand.
Would they have a cap to social security?
Perhaps.
But my question then is that, so, we're, it's, 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 uh, September, they have to, I'm specifically talking about poll workers, poll workers. And every poll has to be open. And she doesn't have people, because on the explanation, you have the authority, based on the pay policy, without coming back to our board, to make that adjustment.
You had a couple of changes to my authority, but I'm not sure they included the ability to adjust part-time pay rates.
Because there aren't ranges, it's just flat amount.
Well, this is gonna happen, you know, what I'm talking about, even though when a budget works out, this is gonna occur. It's gonna happen in October, September. We're, we're gonna send up layers, say, we don't have enough people for the poll.
And maybe what I would say to that, I agree with you, and, and regardless of what authority I have in September, we're already gonna have a pretty bad problem then, right? And even so, what I'm saying is, even if I have the authority to adjust pay rates, and we can start recruiting at a higher pay rate at that point, we may still have trouble getting enough people on board and trained up to perform the necessary functions.
Just wanna make sure we have the tools available. That's what I'm asking the board to be.
Those, those election pay rates do jump out as, as still pretty low, and we could look at, at bumping those specific pay rates up a little bit in advance, almost anticipating that issue, which again, at these pay rates, it's hard not to anticipate some kind of issue.
Mr. Campbell, will we, in our work session, at some point, those rates there, just a position for, to make? I would love to see a session of some kind. See in twelve, thirteen.
I wonder about adding four or five dollars an hour to.
I mean, because even with the minimum of, of what I can work, work for under social security, that's still not gonna come close to what that, that salary's gonna be.
How about, how about we, we can do a little bit of modeling maybe for Wednesday and come back and let you know what, what that delta was.
Some. If we did, if, what you, we'd have, yeah, if, if you do move the four up.
How's that?
Correspond to some work that is, that is intended to animal control.
So, I, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying changing all of the part-time pay. I'm not sure that election worker, election assistants, and animal control, shelter attendants sort of compete for the same pool of work. But I'm also not saying that, that I think that we don't have any trouble recruiting shelter attendants at thirteen dollars an hour. That's very smelly work, too.
It was difficult for me to hear people complain about potential election integrity.
Right.
Or concerns.
Right.
Um, then, um, when it comes to paying those people to better the process.
And setting a tax rate that will support doing that.
Then, 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 what's your alternative? What, what would they suggest?
We, we have got to operate in the world of reality.
That's my point. Yeah, yeah, that, that's why I want.
And one suggestion is something that's flipped out our hand, and that's reducing the number of days.
Right.
Early voters of the vote.
All legislative.
That would have to go through the state, but, uh, look how many people we've paid to sit the last several weeks runoff. Early vote, runoff election, then tomorrow's election day runoff. We've been paying people to sit.
No, they only opened up. But still, but, but still, when you see five people come vote today, or four people come vote today, you've got, what, six, eight, ten people sitting there waiting for those five people to come in.
State board of elections does not reimburse any of this.
They just have to, they just say, what you have to do.
If we open up two precincts, we have to have a full staff.
We only had two precincts for this early, for the runoff.
I'm talking for this, for tomorrow's election. We had to pull up two precincts. And, oh.
No, all precincts.
All precincts, I really, I mean, early voters, you gotta make precincts.
I thought it said that if you were gonna have to go to those.
Yeah, all, all.
Tomorrow, you get to pull up all precincts. And full of staff.
That's what I believe.
And how many people are gonna go vote?
And twenty gonna come up and vote, and the whole county.
The question is, though, is that, you know, free and available access, that's the bottom line to, to voting.
We, we're paying more money out than the community's coming to come to vote. I didn't know we had opened up all precincts. I thought it was just like.
Early, early, it was open up to two precincts, one of them three. We had, we had three for the primary. But as far as I know, Mr. Randy, you know, we haven't opened up all precincts for the runoff that's occurring.
Runoff.
For the runoff date, for the.
Is it, you know, is the election in all precincts?
I think it's.
Yeah.
Yes. State wide, yeah, we have all.
Yeah, statewide, that's a little more.
We gotta give the whole, all camp, uh, all precincts. And all, all precincts, and we got the full staff all.
All for one election runoff.
Yeah, and there's no reimbursement to the state.
Thank God for DSS.
Anyway, they, right, that's a, that's a situation where we don't control that at this point. Does absorb the cost or whatever.
Do we get it and let it back?
Nope.
At, at this point, sort of a cost of doing business with the election setup that we have. Um, okay, I do want to, um, shift now to, uh, review of service expansions. Um, and remind me what page that is.
Section.
Section nineteen, so all the way at the back. We talked a lot about these, I did, uh, a week ago. You can see, um, dollar amounts and notes here. The notes are obviously not endlessly illustrative, but I think rather than me talking through each of these one by one, I'm, I'm happy to, to try to answer any questions about funded or unfunded, uh, expansion requests at this point.
Page one, county manager, the ones you are recommending.
And a little bit of page two.
I have a question about number fourteen.
Okay.
How many, how many K9s do we currently have?
If we look at the notes, covers cost-related increasing from four to seven K9 deputies. So it would appear, based on the note, and again, I am, I don't personally know that this is exactly the correct answer, but it would appear that we have now have seven K9 handlers at ten dollars.
I'm opposed to that.
Is it?
I'm opposed to raising it. I can see at the most five, but do you think above five K9 for a county our size? I know that's a sheriff's.
Sheriff.
Sheriff's decision, but it's a budget decision as well. Not to mention the fact we know that they're asking for, um, donations for schools for food for K, for the K9 program. So that makes no sense.
And it, it is that, this is a good example, right, of the sheriff doesn't have to ask our permission. He could have twenty-five K9s, but he does have to ask us, uh, if it would be, right, when he runs out of money for dog food and vet bills. Budget for that, and so.
So three thousand dollars for vet bills for that many K9s, unless we have some type of K9 insurance. I mean, you can go through one incident, foul obstruction of a K9 is three thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars.
So, what do we have now? Seven. They're already there. He did that on his own, but has, is short money for vet bills and, 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 you know, my reason for going from the requested eight to three was sort of acknowledging that we weren't asked our opinion operationally of this shift. And so I think, Commissioner, you know, probably, and I have a limited appetite to support that, you know, with additional money for, for K9 units we weren't asked about. But that's obviously a judgment.
So he already, he already has them on board and brought on that expense.
Oh, I believe so, yeah.
Why didn't that come before the board?
It's no new people.
He took it out of discretionary.
Or just out of, he's got a big budget with a lot of line items.
That's what I mean, so it came out of discretionary punch for the lineup.
Initially, at least initially, he's able to cover the costs, right, of training people to be K9 handlers and at least some of the food and veterinary costs, but.
Well, I'm gonna say this, that's right.
This takes, you know, this takes his budget from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand dollars.
What?
Takes the budget from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand.
I don't agree with that, though.
Just so you know, that's where it would be if it was three thousand.
Unless he has special insurance, you have one veterinary vet that's gonna cost you three thousand dollars.
So your point is that even, even a fifteen thousand dollar budget here could easily be inadequate.
Can someone tell me how much it costs to maintain a K9 a year? Do we have that cost?
Provided any.
Now, I, I mean, do, do we know how much it costs to feed a K9? Do we have no, how much it costs to train a K9? Do we know how much, do we actually have any K9, I mean, I got pet insurance, my dog. Are you actually carrying pet, uh, or K9 insurance? I mean, I think it's unreasonable to ask for requests, even though they already on their own discretionary budget moved up, without, without us having an understanding of all the discretionary costs goes along with the lineup. And simply approving it means then that.
Tacitly approving the expansion.
Well, not only that, but that when the costs do get beyond what is proposed, then that means more discretionary spa, costs coming out of other categories. So let me make this clear publicly. I am a thirty-two-year law enforcement veteran. I have worked with K9s extensively, not as a, not as an operator, but so, as an operator with them by my side, but not as the handler. I do understand the cost of maintaining a pet. I do not know the cost of maintaining a K9, having it adequately caged, annually shot, all the different things that go along with it. But for us to take this on without having any discussion with the sheriff, I think, and just, just, you know, and we come, bring this back, um, at, at the meeting with the sheriff, obviously, I'd love to converse with him on it. But again, seven K9s, that's one K9 per deputy. We have sixty-six road deputies, sixty-six law enforcement personnel. That's one, that's, that's almost, that's more than one. That's, that's a lot for a county our size. That's my point.
Commissioner May, I would be interested in knowing just what other counties they dance, personal, frankly.
Yes. And if I'm wrong, I, I stand.
Those three, maybe what they have, in the comparison of like size, was what they.
But it doesn't look like a large line item, which, it's great.
Right.
But what is the real line item? What are the, what are the underlying expenses that, that we really could capture?
How about this? It's conceivable that administration staff might be able to make a little bit of headway. But in a way, I would like to put the burden of these questions on the sheriff himself.
Yeah, that's fine.
And so maybe to say to him, sort of, this, this proposed increase is kind of on hold pending your provision of some additional analysis of the need for seven, cost per animal per year, and comparative information from, from some other surrounding counties.
Just still in my experience of dealing with sick, sick animals, do I know how much it costs. They have a ballot for it, or they swallow something, that's what it costs. And, and obviously, law enforcement K9 is, is really out there working hard. And placed in dangerous situations in which injuries, uh, unfortunately occurred to the, to the, to the animal. And then mere cost as well, just, when they're staying at a residence, how are they being handled? What, what's that cost?
They're also hard on vehicles. They're trying to resell some vehicles, they're, you know, give it a classified.
Well, what's the cost of equipping a car for a K nine? Different, uh, I'm sure it's different, has to have certain air conditioning standards as well because it has to maintain, uh, at a, at a temperature, uh, when the oxygen's not in.
Quick question. I got two. One is, uh, forty-nine, uh, Slayman, uh, Elson, uh, you got N C fifty-six and Grove, you don't have a problem. And you got Salem Road. They have the license and everything up at Salem Road.
You see that one, Russ, that was, uh, that was your request, this is item forty-nine. U S one fifty-eight at Salem Road.
We need to put a light on, uh, four wall in nine C.
You can, you could add that, I, I listed the two that kept coming up in emails, Mister, um.
They already put the light up, the license up a better, they.
This wasn't.
Okay, this's already been taken care of. Salem Road has been taken care of.
It's not a recommended, right, right, right. So, so Lotus, I have not recommended these for, for additional funding anyway, uh, so page three, I guess page three is not, uh, our expansion request that I'm not recommending funding for. And the ninety-five thousand dollars there, is basically whenever an intersection or a road improvement doesn't meet N C D O T's, all the warrants for, for additional investment, it doesn't mean that they won't consider it at all if the local government in charge is willing to put some of their own money. Then they will study it further and consider whether, you know, maybe they can install something. So these, these intersections, I think, have been looked at, correct, Russ, and, and they indicated that ninety-five thousand dollars would, in essence, help grease the skids and get some further review going.
Yes, doesn't mean they're gonna get a further. Right?
No, I think a hundred people had doubted that, that four wall for it.
We can take it up with D O T.
But yet, but yet, but yet still they can pay, take, take, put a twenty-five thousand dollar sign, uh, sign up, costs, ten twenty-five thousand dollars.
I get beat up, I get beat up every month on intersection, and at the end of the day, is.
Somehow, no, that, somehow, to me, they don't have that product. I'm gonna try to put a four week stop sign up that in the middle of nowhere, then turn around and put a, and put up a sign where all these wrecks and stuff be happening back, four wall and, and, uh, nine C. I don't know, anyway. And my next one is, uh, uh, twenty-one, I mean, twenty-two.
Right.
Those ambulance. We gonna buy ambulances and furnishing and staffing, and you got an ambulance set up in a fire department, I mean, at an EMS station, fully equipped, and you gonna need, and you need to staff. Now, I have a problem with that. I have a serious problem with that. Ambulance setting up at interstation, fully, uh, fully equipped. But we gonna hire, we gonna pay for another ambulance and, and staff it.
I think I would, I would point out two things with regard to that question, one of which, this isn't even completely full freight for the staffing. I talked some more with Adam and, um, we looked at the timeline for hiring the staff for the new ambulance, and decided we would, we would cover three quarters of a year, so the five thirty-five there is three quarters of a year of the full staffing for, uh, for the new ambulance. I believe Commissioner Jay, that the, it is important, uh, because for an EMS system to have a spare vehicle, I think that the spare that is currently located up in Oak Hill, which is, as you say, it is operational and fully equipped, is the oldest one in the fleet, so it's kind of being held there as a spare, uh, in case one of the other newer ambulances does go down and has to, has to be, uh, fixed or whatever, uh, done to it. So, you know, it, it's an interesting question, right, but, but any ambulance that we want to put into operation also requires the, the staffing, so even if we decided we're not gonna buy a new one, we're gonna put that one into operation, we would still have all of the staffing costs, right? We would, we would save in the short run, we would maybe save on the, the, the cost of a new ambulance itself, but again, we would then find ourselves without a spare and potentially, you know, kind of, not really benefiting in that way from, from. But I agree, I, I understand why it's irritating to have a, a perfectly good ambulance sitting in Oak Hill and not having to be able to respond to calls up there, that, I understand that that is.
Yeah, you gotta change it, rather than changing it, same place. We had a patient, uh, uh, Charles Stoball Road, less than two minutes, uh, two minutes from, from, uh, EMS station. Had to wait for an ambulance to come from Oxford, for a heart attack. So, to me, it seems like he would go to the northwestern, eastwestern part of the county that we get swiped. We pay taxes too. We even run them. But, uh, we want some of the power to.
County manager.
Yes, sir.
Oh. Just here, man. Um, number eighteen. Can you kind of explain that? That includes supplement.
No. So that item is, I think it's largely, has two components, one of which is, so just like us, their, their health costs, right, and the cost to, to, uh, are, are going up, so that's one component. Second component is, uh, there are state funded positions working in the school system, and there are locally funded. The state budget, the, the biannual budget included, uh, seven percent raises over two years, in the upcoming year, it will be four percent. And so part of what we have to budget, if we want a locally funded position to get the same raise that state funded position gets, is the second component of that, of that cost. Does that make sense?
On, on.
Oh, oh, can I, can I make one other point? Item forty-five, which is on the unfunded list, is one point two million, that is supplement request, uh, which was to replace the ESRS funding that had moved the local supplement from ten to twelve, actually, they, sorry, I should write that. They said they funded that out of fund balance. Uh, the, the, the temporary bump of local supplement, they bumped it from ten to twelve percent, and also gave classified staff, uh, a bump, so they're asking that the county basically, in perpetuity, pick up that, that local supplement increase and offer, uh, the classified staff between a one and a five percent, um, local supplement as well. So the total cost of that, which I'm not recommending be funded, not because I don't think it's warranted on some level or needed, but because I just don't see how we, our budget can, can manage it.
Yes, forty-five.
Number forty-five was one point two million.
The items you have here, county managers, with the school system, are they in line with the discussion with Adam about, um, the I P and three more, uh, holly?
Yes, and so, but I do, uh, want to talk about that in the sense that, um, and that's why I put the, the education topic on for Wednesday, is that I'm going this afternoon at four to meet with the school board and talk through with them, Russ, what you and I talked through with Superintendent Ms. Hines, uh, Chair Williams, and Vice Chair Finsey. Uh, and basically kind of put before the Board of Education that, um, this operational funding and or capital funding is sort of contingent on our, um, getting, seeing movement on a holly. And so the question that, I, I think I, I will gauge kind of where they seem to be tonight, and what I would want us to talk about then on Wednesday, is if they are not yet at yes on that question, is there some portion of the funding, increased funding being recommended for the schools that we would like to put sort of in an escrow account of some sort, on balance, for example, or where it could be held if and until they get to a point where they're able to make a decision on holly? So there, there is quite a lot of, um, between capital and the operating, uh, significant increase for the schools coming next year, and we're, as I think you're all aware, hopeful that that represents some leverage to, to kind of achieve a reduction in square footage that will also benefit some other, uh, needs in the county.
Just Chairman, if I may, I would, knowing a few things that's going on behind the scenes for the people, um, I would expect to ask, you know, the discussion after, I have a good, a good word, a word, a word, a thing. We may not have to cross some bridges that.
That's, that's good news, I hope that's, that's, uh. The capital money and the, and the money for teachers is obviously money that, that they do need, they don't have an easy time for, for workers either.
It's a difficult thing, Commissioner Jay and I were up at the festival in Oxford on Saturday, and one of my real promising young teachers came up to us, talked about how much he's drawing out energy, and how, you know, waking Durham, you know, is really heavy, of course, for some young people that supplement their, so it's, um, it's trying to keep the most qualified people before a kid, and tough season, and season. I can sure understand how there may be some, some heartburn about how this came about, but I will tell you, at that time, Deuce was, I guess, about forty teachers at that time, so I sure don't have any problem with trying to rescue, I should, so, but I understand.
Just out of, this is a funny coincidence, one of my soccer players that I was coaching, um, this fall, his mother, I was chatting with her at the end of season party that they had for, his mother is Jamaican, he teaches at, uh, Bramble or Middle School, she's, she's from Jamaica, she's part of a crew that, that started coming, helping supplement our teaching. These are her one son and he was on my soccer.
Chairman, first of all, I'd like to recuse myself, since I am on this budget for A C I M, um, but I want to thank you all, um, for even considering this, um, we've had an increase this last year of a thousand students per month, and that's eight months, so that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars more, it's costing us backpacks, so every dime we can get from anywhere is great, so thank you for the expansion, um, because it is very well needed, that I recuse myself.
Well, last thing, county manager, well, uh, number fourteen. How, how far over did we go in overtime, as of today?
I think it's in the ballpark of three hundred thousand dollars.
So with that amount of overhead, and how much were they budgeting?
It started at seventy-five.
Are we not concerned based on? I'm concerned based on the growth in K nine and the staffing challenges that law enforcement continues to have. Not against, I'm concerned at twenty-five thousand dollars, that I figured that, that we're comfortable with, so we don't go back into it, because moving, I don't care if they do, but he's moving money for, this is, help me out.
I think that whatever we put in overtime will get spent. I also think that, you know, we, we, where the twenty-five thousand dollar increase came from, I think we've mentioned, right, we've reviewed a number of previous years of overtime expenditures, and they were in the eighty, ninety thousand dollar range, uh, and so a hundred thousand, right, which would be the seventy-five of what was budgeted in the current year, plus twenty-five would be a hundred thousand. So that was not, not a massive increase, but sort of a somewhat of an increase in light of what the typical annual of expenditures had been. Um, another way of, of looking at that, right, and, and the sheriff could, in a way, what we approved in all of the line items of the sheriff's budget on both detention and on law enforcement, for him, are sort of fungible, they're flexible, right? So what we did this year could happen again next year, which is, if he finds himself going over on overtime, even over a hundred thousand, he may have to, he would have to, uh, that could be managed, he would have to pull funding from other line items to help fund that.
My, my concern with that is that, understand the logic behind what, what you're saying, because that, can we not be looking at his budget in a way at this point of? How much is discretionary, because there's other, those are in line items, exactly, the way in which it appears to be managed, it was, um, money moved for discretionary purposes to where he believed it was mostly, obviously, something he has the right to do. But are we, are we, are we, are we setting things in other categories that will be spent out, and then we end up with a deficit of, of overtime, and then we have to come back and do a budget amendment for monies exceeding, uh, his budget? Um, because he, the, the discretionary, again, it's, it's all hypothetical, you know, it's overspent, so can, can we not look at the sheriff's budget and define in areas that would be, uh, were precise to what he actually is going to spend, uh, as, as I would expect your other departments are doing, and everyone's looking at their budget, and a three to five percent cut, this was I saw in your, in the, in the manager's, um, message, that everyone was tasked to do that, and look at that, and then adjust your budgets accordingly, are we asking the same thing?
So that was asked of, of every department to come up with a list of potential cuts, not to actually, right, to sort of say, if you had to, um, what would you cut? Uh, I do not believe that the sheriff came up with a proposal on that.
So, so my point is, is that, you know, um, I don't think twenty-five thousand dollars enough, and have we actually done the due diligence in regards to his overall budget to make sure that, that we end up with a budget that's gonna be something that, that's consistently followed, as similar departments follow, uh, that, that, um, even though he is a constitutionally elected sheriff, um, that he would still have to stay in within a budget that other people, other department heads are expected to do, and therefore, we would not have to worry about having come back at a later date and say, oh, my goodness. In other words, I, I think we're setting a bad precedent by not, by not aligning his budget in tune with what his discretionary spending was, and then see where we, where potential cuts could be made, because, um, you know, a lot of staff shortfalls, there's a lot of reasons why that overtime was there, some, some, good, bad indifference, but, but I don't know that we've remedied anything, uh, in, in regards to a budget, uh, that, that, um, shows, um, demonstrates to the public that we're attempting to make sure that all our departments are physically responsible in all their areas, including all the line item. I hope that makes sense.
I think if, if I could, you know, the way I'm hearing this is, to begin with, somehow we were able to find within his budget, close to three hundred thousand dollars to pad the overtime budget with, where did that come from, and why was there so much water in, in other parts of the sheriff's budget?
Exactly.
I think the bulk of the answer to that is in vacant positions, because it's a pretty, and in a way, that makes sense, right, you incur more overtime costs if you have a lot of vacant positions, now, I think we all know that there were some other use.
Really only the sheriff is the only additional vote person coming in, I think. Education review, I think, is going to be a review of tonight's conversation with the Board of Education and what our strategy is. On the topic of radios. Well, so that's what started the process I'm about to describe to you. I saw that and I knew generally speaking about sort of significant number of missing radios. Thought to myself, I'm not prepared to put five hundred thousand dollars into the budget for new radios if I don't know, A, what the kind of status of the current universe of radios is that we have already purchased, or about the process of keeping track of radios more generally. I do know that radios become obsolete. I do know that they need to be upgraded and so forth. And so what I have, we had one good long sit down with Jason and the sheriff. Started to talk through the universe of radios that we have purchased that are still potentially operative. And what I think, what I've tasked Jason with moving forward is kind of a mini radio C I P. So obviously, we need to recover, if possible, and/or turn off completely any of those missing radios, right? And to be fair to the sheriff, I think he prefers to be fair to repeating, most of these disappeared before his watch. Okay, so whether we have turned over every stone or combined those radios, I'm not positive. I know that a fair number of efforts have been made to locate them and get ahold of them, and to develop better processes for hanging on to all of the radios that we currently have. But none of that has any bearing on the cost we will have to incur, right, for regular replacement and updating of the number of radios that the county. And so what I would like to do is do that process moving and come back to you all at a later date with kind of a better and longer term plan for radio replacement and upgrades. My anticipation is there will be some current year cost. And what I would say is that the fund balance of capital plan that is being proposed, I think, could be a source of funding for new radios that we might need to purchase in the coming year. And might be a reasonable place for a sub, kind of a radio C I P, right, a little subpopulation of our capital needs that we see in the out years to live. And it could be funded out of that same fund comfortably if we move ahead with the recommended two cents for capital increase.
So County Manager, I do understand that this has been an ongoing situation, one in which the sheriff. But our county just purchased a number of radios. I want to say, you remember the statistic with Mr. Karen, how much? One point two million dollars in radios, just if I'm correct, a couple of years ago. So again, it goes back to what I'm saying. If we're going to be physically responsible, then we have to have policies, procedures, a means to. For these, they say, this just can't happen. Now, County Manager, you inherited this problem as well, I get. I know that others inherit this problem, so this is not about casting rocks. There's no one that's sitting at these tables that is perfect. But what I am saying is that if we don't have established policies, there's consequences with that type of. The average radio cost between thirty-five hundred and five thousand dollars. This is not, so it kind of raises the temperature, if you will, of this commissioner. And I got to be honest with you, when I'm looking at approving or discussion over a tax rate like this, we need answers. And it makes it difficult when I can look on this board here and I can identify absolutely. I mean, it's no question, our county needs to do something. But then when you're responding to the taxpayer, boom, what about this? You're speechless.
I think that this, I understand that completely, and I have a similar reaction to it. I don't know how that number of radios go wandering off, if there's anybody halfway climbing. At the same time, right, this is one of those situations where you have an obligation to kind of paint the train while it's going down the tracks because there are radios that will no longer function on July one, twenty twenty-five, right? And some of what's being proposed are radios to replace those. The lead time on those radios is about nine months, so if you don't know what you need and get them ordered.
But I thought that's why we made the heavy investment of one point two million dollars of radios was to meet the Viper requirement.
I think there are even more that are needed to have enough radios across the board to meet that Viper requirement.
One point two million dollars was in our, my office, control, and the hospital reimbursed us. We included them in the payment on both purchases. The hospital reimbursed, because that was a medical fire, several hurtings. Myself and the sheriff's department.
So they were still operating, so theirs have to be replaced. It's not a question whether they're lost or not, they have an imminent need.
Right, okay, and with the lead time, right, those radios will have to be ordered, you know, not too long into fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five, if we're going to have what we need onboard. That doesn't mean that we don't keep trying to kind of do as much due diligence as we can on the radios that have walked off, right? And I don't know what else to say to people, right?
So what you're saying though is that the forty-one eighty-one thousand dollars that's needed is for a new radio that meets the requirements of the Viper system that we're going to have to do, that would occur whether or not.
Now, we're independent of the one point two million dollars. Largely independent, right? Would we have needed the same number if no radios had walked off? I don't know that for a fact, but I think, again, we have an obligation to make sure that our folks have compliant functional radios whenever these, you know, state upgrades happen. And so trying to make sure that that happens and has sufficient funding in place for it, while trying to make sure that, kind of looking backwards, we're adding as much accountability backwards into some, you know, situation that doesn't appear to have been a very accountable one as much as possible.
So the missing radios in question, obviously, there's no sign out sheet where no one got a radio.
I wish it were that simple.
So, we don't know where the radios are, right? We don't know what.
So, here's a mechanism in question. I sent the email out this morning, they're supposed to give you their list about last week. So we're going to have to temporarily cut off the radios, go find some. Once that temporarily suspended, it will not work. I'll be able to cut them off, and someone says, my radio no longer works.
Now, if that radio is in the hands of somebody who's not supposed to have in the first place, they're not going to come in and say, hey, how come the radio that I'm not even supposed to have in the first place isn't working? They'll just throw it in the trash or whatever. But at least they won't be an operational hazard, right, for somebody not supposed to be listening to our official radio traffic. Won't be able to listen.
We got to start somewhere. Go cut them off. Start somewhere. Start knowing where your, where you should be. We got a radio. Right?
To give you a better idea of what's actually needed.
So some of these radios up in Woodland, where you would first Woodland.
We have an hour and a half also at the end of the day for other topics and questions. We've eaten up about, no pun intended, about half of our lunch hour. I don't know if we want to kind of stick a pin in this for now, we can come back to expansions and other kinds of questions that people may have at the end of the day. Is it a good time to break?
I will just say, I know that it certainly can't be in my conversation, but I did set up a meeting on the twentieth, and I'm just going to do my best to work and build some kind of working relationship. And I'm making that effort. Yeah, I.
Great for lunch, let's get to the back. I feel like I'd like to dive into my bed and take a nap.
I agree.
I did that for a reason.
I just make too much of a deal, I think.
All right, I'm going to let our management analyst, David Chek Snyder, who's been taking over a fair bit of the work on school resource officer analysis, we'll tag team, but I'm going to let him start and go through some information that he has prepared for us to start off with. This is a kind of complicated topic because who funds what and where these officers are at any given point. So if you have any questions, jump in at any point. Just a summary of SROs in the county. County funds eight SRO. On the total, eight, one, you see seven are through the sheriff's office. Six of those go to the public schools and one goes to Oxford Prep. The A position, A, three more, four there. In general, we spend about seven hundred forty thousand dollars on operating budget. Number is a little imprecise, trying to talk about individuals, so you have individual salaries, not like Eric, SRO costs. But you have vehicles, tool, everything that goes along with. And then below that, you have a list of where, in general, I think there are a little wiggle room, especially with elementary schools. These aren't the precise segments all the time, but these are where the seven sheriff's office SROs are. And again, county funds, these are the public schools and Oxford Prep. The county funds eight of those, and then have two funded by county.
David, just for clarification, are you certain Oxford Prep is paid for by the county or is that contracted out and paid by Oxford Prep?
They pay for that.
I was going to say, I thought Oxford Prep.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's.
That's okay, that's okay.
That's funding that comes from the county.
Funnel through the.
Right, right. We are reappearing that. One interesting question that the sheriff and Mr. Davis and I, and none of us knew the answer to it, not even anybody really knew definitively. When we entered into that arrangement, did the county actually add an F T E? Or did we just pocket the ninety-five thousand dollars and sort of, and nobody knew the answer, right? But from the current sheriff's point of view, right, the revenue is great, it sort of goes to the county. But in essence, he would, if we didn't add an F T E, the sheriff's office as a whole would have lost a position, a functional position doing other sheriff's office work. But that happened in twenty eighteen, and you know, sort of, a little bit of water under the bridge, but an interesting wrinkle in the.
It's exactly a wash, right? I mean, it's a wash.
That one is, right, but unclear whether we actually added an F T E to the office when that happened. Going forward, we have schools receiving additional state funding. They're back, I think, in twenty eighteen, two years. Still unclear what the net results of that will be, requirements for grants for four. That will be funding, that will have to be new positions or that will help backfill some of the things that are already.
Question, from my knowledge and I've heard different. SRO goes into a school that might be one of the principal states, uh, where we. Sheriff needs that SRO for whatever reason, name in house for him that day, for whatever reason. That, did he pull that SRO or?
Same as the animal control discussion, that's full authority. All of those people serve at the pleasure of the sheriff.
Maybe they don't always get to that school because it's a need for that SRO to be, wherever the sheriff may be. Where the other need may be greater.
And the accountability mechanism that we are putting in place, which if you look at this two forty, is maybe for roughly a third of that funding, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, will be held in a reserve not, that doesn't start initially in the sheriff's office. And it's not going to be fine tuned down to the minute, because I think all of us realize that the sheriff occasionally, they're going to be. People may be sick, you know, they may, you know, they may have a required training that can't happen on another day. There may be, you know, public safety events that really require them to be somewhere else. So there's a little wiggle room in this accountability mechanism, but basically, we're setting this up with the expectation that, you know, eighty and ninety percent of this deputy hours need to be spent at this school.
But when the parent calls me and says there was a fight at Graham Middle School, and there was no SRO, and it was supposed to be. And I didn't, I just say the sheriff has the authority to have that personnel somewhere else.
And these are pretty static, there's the SRO assigned at school, and so directly figure out what deputy doing that.
We don't even have Wilton on here.
There's not one, there's not one SRO per school.
So, Wilton in Mount Andrews.
I think some of these, especially with the elementary schools, check in, I'm not sure they back scheduled this. These were sort of the rough main assignments that the students invited me. But I know that there's further rotation, it gets complicated too, when these, still, how they divided.
Is that Creepo Police Office, one, South Ground, and Creepo Elementary?
Creepo Elementary is now.
Oh. But South Graham High School has a Creepo police officer, Holly, Holly Middle School has a Creepo police officer.
And Holly Middle School is at the old Creepo Elementary.
Exactly.
But there's still a school there at Holly.
Yeah, no, Graham Academy.
But that's still.
No, you're right, but they don't have an SRO.
And they're the kids that need it in the middle.
They don't have an SRO.
Those are the, that's the.
That's Phoenix.
Oh, okay, okay, but still, why couldn't they be in one of?
That's the same thing, let's go back up here to Merf Hollow, you've got Merf Hollow Phoenix Academy. You've got an SRO and the school will be closed. What do you say?
It's supposed to be closed.
Supposed to be closed. They're using a weed of Holly, if I'm making, they're using a weed of Holly, of Graham Academy. To my knowledge, they don't have an SRO. Doesn't mean that SROs don't stop by each of the schools. In most cases, SROs go to each of these schools, except maybe permanently assigned SROs to some of these bigger schools. But in case of, um, South Graham, Holly, Creepo Elementary is gone. And then those students were moved to where Creepo Elementary is, Holly Middle School is. And so they each have a Creepo police officer. So Creepo provides two, two police officers, and Butler Public says provides one there and also, it's not county funded, but one also falls. Have you noticed anything that Oxford wished for? Is there a reason for that?
Probably had a solid handful of conversations with County Manager about that and about trying to develop some readiness to start providing SROs. Their response has pretty steadily been, we're so understaffed, right, that we have to kind of cover our public safety, the basic public safety basis before we start providing SROs, which on some level I get. I also pointed out to him, I think, generally, the kinds of officers or deputies who make a good SRO are not necessarily the same people who are, you know, running narcotics things or doing highway enforcement or whatever. So there are kind of specialized positions, and then if they, they may need to recruit for that kind of role. And then, and then you won't be tempted, right, to kind of use that position to kind of backfill your standard public safety roles if they are different kinds of functions. But the short answer is, no, they are not yet providing any SROs.
Right, because you get the wall show, right? SRO, they are, they are splitting.
So it's important that, you know, this, this part of the document developed after the conversation I was having. This would happen something, why the, why they're gone there, and so realizing even more complicated areas than I had. There will be some, especially, I kind of encourage you to take the people more as a position and specific. But this is more to think about, what the county is funding. Butler one is one that we used to fund, that used to be through the sheriff's office. All right, so this is, David didn't mention this, we are also looking and working, we'll be working with the attorney's office and the school attorney, trying to develop a contractual relationship that will cover all of this. We are waiting to see how much additional SRO funding the schools can get to the state. I think that will be helpful no matter what, although how it gets divvied up and to which agencies. For example, if we get, let's say, a couple hundred thousand dollars or more, right? And we'll, we'll sending, can we entice Oxford to provide a dedicated SRO by giving them thirty cents on the dollar, right, for the cost of that SRO? Will that be enough of an inducement for them to actually pay the other seventy percent and hire an SRO for their, for Oxford's school? Unclear, but I would like, you know, if we do get several hundred thousand dollars from the state, I would like the county to also, for that to also defray some of the costs that we have been incurring for the SROs that we are funding, but I'm happy for it to also defray the cost of other local governments providing SRO funding for SROs in kind of quote unquote their schools, they would be sad.
This may be a wild shot, off topic, whatever you call it, but with the one point, there'll be dollars or whatever to save. Does this not be something that contact our representative is about to say this would be, Representative, uh, Sossman, Winslow, and Senator Bodie, and say this would be for county for us?
Yeah, the same school act provided an opportunity for our schools, the first year, the second year of it, apply for SRO position, we were funded, I think, half position from that money grossly, I think, funded for what we did. It was on a two-year cycle, that two-year cycle will come to an end next year. We are already in line working with Sossman, Senator Bodie, even with Mr. Winslow to pick up more funding or at least have people advocate that we get much more funding. I do like, so that's a process, it has been a process. We actually went back again this year, but because it's done every two years, it was, that one was closed. And even the school, even the legislature, they went back out. What upset a lot of people was is that even though we were underfunded, they had a pool of money remaining and they, they went back out and solicited more people to obtain funds that did not initially apply. And they got funded. So we've done what we can as local representatives, working with the legislators to do that. I think the challenge I made for the County Manager is that when this concept came about with getting the local law enforcement agency and municipalities involved, is that these incidents that occur, they're going to be in their church. If we were to have a school incident, Creepo or a school incident in Oxford, who's in charge? Your local municipality, you have to make a decision. Do you want to be in charge of that? Otherwise, the sheriff will be in charge, and again, it's not about competing forces, it's about if something occurs in your jurisdiction, do you want to own it? And so that's why I would believe if I were a municipality or if I were a police agency, I'd be seeking funding where I could support active engagement and retention in my jurisdiction. Otherwise, the sheriff does have authority across all county, including Minnesota. And so that's on them. So I'm hoping that in time that they will see the benefit, because the other benefits of the SRO as well is is that having a law enforcement officer from within your community, serving within your community, and being with those children, not just during the school year, but during the summer months, to further mentor those students through various programs within the community, is really the core of an SRO program. And so I'm hopeful that they'll take the County Manager's encouragement and actually step up and in some, some means of funding at some point, that's going to be the challenge that we face, particularly if we don't get additional funding.
One thing that I sort of try to remember when I'm hitting them up for this kind of contribution, I forget what a, you know, in our typical towns, you know, a penny on the local tax rate might generate sixty, seventy thousand dollars. So in essence, for an SRO, I'm asking them to put a penny and a half on their tax rate, right? So it's not an insignificant request to one of these small municipalities, you know, whereas for us, it would be a fraction of a penny. But it's like us asking them, we get asked to fund a whole new ambulance and staffing, right? That's in essence what we're asking them for SRO, so that's a lot, it's a big lift.
It may not be as much as the whole penny, but part of a penny or something, but at least moving in a direction that will at least that. Even if that doesn't occur, you now have a police officer in Creepo who's now going to be mentoring those kids and they know who they are, so.
And they don't, they don't dispute the logic of that, right? The logic of that part is perfectly obvious to them, right? But, I mean, they know the all-in cost of an SRO is, you know, pushing hundred thousand dollars a year. But, I mean, they know the, the all-in cost of an SRO is, you know, pushing hundred thousand dollars a year and everything. But it's, it's not an insignificant cost. But, but hopefully, you know, some, an additional slug of state money will get us closer to one-to-one, you know, SRO per, per school, which I know has been a goal for the elected leader of the county.
I was thinking on that topic. Uh, there, there was a survey of Carolina counties that went around the budget, uh, a month ago that, uh, the breakdown of county funding, county funding for SROs. All over the board, all over the state, zero to a hundred county responsibilities, but I'd say most, most places like us. But, what do you think, county money? Um, and then, uh, talking about funding, understand that state-funded positions are something that is actually fully funded. The number they use, about two-thirds, like a grand, a million dollars. So even if we get all the way up to every campus with an SRO, it's still going to be a county.
Yeah, it would be a good problem to have though, so we'll see, we'll see what kind of money we get.
And, and the schools are optimistic with this current round of grants, like, uh, about that.
Questions on SROs? Again, about a third of this seven hundred and forty thousand dollars will be in the, the SRO reserve. And, um, without being too heavy-handed on it, will be released and, and sort of by budget transfer will be backed into the sheriff's office budget to the degree that those SROs are, are where they need to be.
So we'll, we'll hold the funds back at SROs, whatever schools documented, based in the, you know, sheriff's department, in the way in terms of these funds, how's that?
I think, um, the, the exact sort of accountability mechanism hasn't been fully worked out yet, but I think the way it will work is that the, the deputy themselves, SRO themselves, will have kind of a, an online, like a Google document where they, they keep back of, you know, I was, I was at the school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and half a Friday and then had a doctor's appointment or required training or whatever, right? And that will be a document that the principal of the school also has access to, that we have access to, so everybody will be able to see where, you know, where the, the SRO was and if there's any dispute, right? We have, uh, interestingly, you know, our, our Tyler system, sort of the clocking, clock out has a geo function, we have a geo task in the vehicle. So we have some, some ability to sort of, um, to, uh, sort of check back on where people were if there's a question of where they were at a given time.
County manager, now, if I understand correctly, some of that was brought to your attention by, by the schools, the schools wanted greater accountability.
Yes, they have been very concerned with SROs not being at schools a lot of the time that they were supposed to be there. Um, and there may be a variety of reasons for that, but commissioners have funded SROs to be in schools, right? And we have a, kind of a political problem on our hands, as does the school board, right? If we're all saying to the community, we have this many SROs, but in fact, they're not materializing on the ground. Um, and so we're trying to improve on that situation. The sheriff has been, uh, helpful, I think we, we now have all of the people who are, who will be designated as, as SROs have gotten SRO training at the end of the summer. At the end of the summer, that will be the case. Um, I have spoken with the sheriff about, you know, the, the pure desire of the school board and the county manager to make sure those, those positions are stationed where they're supposed to be. The other thing, the other indicator is that, um, the way the funding has worked up through this year is that we give current expense money to the sheriff's office, sorry, uh, to the schools, and then we bill them for SRO time. And we basically have been billing them the full amount, but this year, they were so frustrated with the limited attendance of SROs at schools that they only paid about, I don't know what percentage of bill was. We're still, we're still kind of negotiating that, but they basically said, if the SROs weren't here at the school, why would we pay for those hours? And I, I couldn't really argue that point either, although, uh, it wa- it was county money to begin with. But, um, we're, we're clearing that up next year, we're not giving them the money in the first place, right? Uh, which has two benefits. One of them is that twenty-five percent of it doesn't go to charter schools, right? And the other benefit is that, um, is that we have this SRO reserve set aside elsewhere, right? And an accountability mechanism to release those funds back, uh, to the sheriff's office. So I, I'm very hopeful that this will be, um, completely improved situation where we will have trained SROs in school, the vast majority of the time. That's the goal.
I'm going to push along some further, let me pass off some further, there are already some funding, probably paid here with the government.
I don't think this has anything to do with, tho- those hours won't be backed. I mean, I, I haven't ever heard any concerns from Oxford Prep about them not getting hours up here, coming back from.
Please pour some money you can pull back, that is good, of course, you need that money for your department.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Uh, I think that's a complicated, which is to say, this Oxford, Oxford Prep gets a big slug of money every year, which is the total per pupil current expense amount that we budget, times the number of Granville County resident students who go to Oxford Prep. That amount, that total amount, next year, uh, will be going up by, on the one hand, will be going up, right? If we add the four ninety-nine, the third year of, of compression, and the four ninety-four, right? That is part of our per pupil allocation, that they would get that. It, it might be minimized very slightly by the a- amount of this. You know, if you divide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by eighty-five hundred, uh, students, um, that is a per pupil amount, times the number of Granville County students who go to Granville, Oxford Prep, so it would, it would be a, a minimal factor. It would, it would decrease very slightly, you know, they otherwise would. Complicated.
With the accountability, trying to put in place the best and oldest way. Thank you, Phil, that's just taking all the ground that the school, some incident, that's, that's. There would need, there would need to be, there would need to be, there would need to be, that, that, when I, in that strict of a situation, we just want to make sure we can.
Yeah, I, I, I also did not want to put the sheriff or the SROs in a position where if they missed fifteen minutes or, you know, an hour here or there, right? That that would, that would impact the overall funding and visibility to pay the salaries of the SROs. That's not the goal of this, right? But when we were kind of down in the, in the area where the schools thought they were only getting, I don't know, forty, fifty, sixty percent of the time, that, that everybody was saying they were supposed to be getting, that's a problem, right? The difference between ninety-two and ninety-three percent of the time, not what we're talking about.
This does not stop the sheriff moving person, operation, that's, that's, that's the key, because he's got to have the ability.
Although I would say there would be some limits to that, right?
Right.
Because in essence, it is also that kind of decision-making that is.
When you have an urgent situation going on, no idea, if you have an urgent situation going on, no idea.
Exactly, exactly.
An, an imminent threat.
I think the, the schools have said that there is usually somebody there. Our certain part are being pulled away, that we have not had enough certified SROs. They actually see that as a liability, not, not a benefit, which is interesting, right? It's actually a liability to have, about, I say hello to all the, the new recruits coming in, deputies, you know, when they come through orientation and they've been truck drivers, they've been this, that, the other thing, right? You stick them in a school full of, of teenagers, you know, a couple of weeks after that, right? And, and it's just not a, uh, the kind of recipe you want to be messing with for a whole bunch of people. There are a lot of different rules that apply when you're dealing with minors and what they need to be aware of for their protection, our protection, the school's protection. When they, when they sit forty, somebody's there. And, and they also don't know who is there calling, right? If, if it's three or four or five different people kind of cycling in over the course of the day or a week, they're, they're not sure, you know, who they're trying to get on the radio if something starts happening. Not, not clear.
Well, like I said, this county manager showed recently a school safety, that they have implemented, are implementing some, all new programs, star new program that, that appeared by a chief. Very impressed with it, uh, training, training, all, all kinds of stuff. That, that, it's clear that the school system, working with the sheriff's department, are making every, uh, doing everything they can to maximize, uh, a better sense of security and a better means of security.
And it makes sense that, that stability in the personnel is going to make that kind of planning work better on the ground every day. Any other questions about SROs? Fire protection funding review, um, what page is that chart? We have a good chart. Pages three and five. So starting on page three, this is a little bit like the slide that, that David produced for the manager's recommended budget. It basically just showed kind of broad year-over-year trend lines of fire funding for the whole fund. Uh, and you'll remember that that, that line was going up pretty strongly. Here you can see on, on section sixteen, page three, you can see kind of, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three actuals in the left column. Um, that did not include, uh, the radios that were budgeted for that year. And then you can see what they went to in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, and then for twenty-four, twenty-five, you can see two columns here. You see the allocated, which is, that's two amounts, that's what used to be called the base funding. And the, according to the enhancement formula, the additional amount that they will get from the fire tax for enhancement. And again, that varies department, uh, the department depending on population, call volume, uh, square footage of building, uh, and so forth. And then the second column there, the twenty-four, twenty-five additional reserve, that is a combination of money that is available to them if they agree to be medical first responders, if they maximize their state and federal grant applications. And another category there, there's a, state grant, um, public grant, like, uh, part-time.
That's right.
That's right, the part-time, the daytime fire drivers is another category there. So these are, these are bits of, uh, fire tax funding that are available to the department, but can only be pulled down if they do X, Y, or Z. So they don't get them as base funding as a matter of course, right? In a way, these are incentives or inducements for the fire departments to engage in certain kinds of behavior that we think will really benefit, uh, the residents of the county. So part of their funding they get is base funding, uh, as a, sort of, that they can use flexibly for whatever they need. And then there's another, this secondary portion, that's a, the reserve that they can access if they do X, Y, or Z. So you then flip over the section sixteen, page five, you can see the, the breakouts, uh, for all the different categories by departments. And the far right column is basically the, the maximum that a department would be able to pull down if they did all of the things, right? If they had, if they billed all of their daytime fire driver hours, if they maximized all of their grant applications, if they agreed to be medical first responders. Uh, that's the amount that they would get. And so it's a lot larger than, you know, base funding from a couple of years ago. And I think it's a good step, uh, for Granville County, uh, a good step to really help bolster these volunteer fire departments and make sure that they're able and equipped with people and, and sort of reasonable equipment to respond to fires and medical calls in the county. Um, but I'll stop there and just see, um, what questions people may have about.
Going back to the first page on page three, I put the left hand side, this is the past, if it's twenty thousand, if we gave to upgrade.
So I think that would be, uh, that would be part of the second column, twenty-three, twenty-four budget, or maybe the amended column, I'm not sure. The amended column isn't, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's part of the second.
Budget.
I think it's the second column.
Okay, so that would be included, that would be twenty grand we gave to upgrade whatever they needed in that middle column.
I believe that's right.
And it's, it could be in that one, even though we're still, if we roll it over in this fiscal year, with the whole funds taken, that would be, that would be still spent.
Okay, so not, they, not all spent.
The next thing, George, just a couple of departments.
One of the interesting things that I would point out is, and we talked about this in the fire commission meetings where we were talking about how much money we could put into like a grant match columns and into the medical first responder columns and even the daytime fire driver columns, because it looked like the total sort of revenue versus expenditures in the fire budget was, was really tight. But if history is, you know, to be any indicator at all, there are going to be a number of departments, right? Who don't get anywhere close to covering all of the hours for the daytime fire drivers. They're not all going to be able to maximize their grant stuff down to the dollar. They're not all going to opt even with twenty thousand dollars as an incentive to participate in the medical first responder program. So, you know, we do want to keep building up our fire tax fund balance because we have some additional stations and other capital investments that we're going to need to make. If every dollar here got spent, we wouldn't add very much to that reserve, but I'm certain that there are going to be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars baked in here that we don't end up spending, that will go to that reserve and help us be able to afford some additional structures that will in turn help us close those, those two holes in the county fire map. Other question?
Just an overall of the chief, the board of directors, are they coming around, are they, please? Are they?
I don't know if we'll ever make them completely happy, probably give them all the million dollars, but you're not going to make them completely happy. I mean, I think they're pleased with the increased funding, but making them satisfied, I don't think, you only ask them questions. But I think they're, they're appreciative of the increased funding.
That part, oh, I think part of this is the learning process, that, you know, we started something now two years ago that, you know, was new. And they were accustomed to getting somewhere in the seventy, eighty range for several years. And it wasn't easy, seventy, imagine doing three hundred calls and you got eighty thousand dollars and then you have to go out and make all this do and all the different things you have to to keep up with the costs you need to burn.
to keep up with the costs you need to burn. The average age of our fire vehicles at the time of the study, it cost the county twenty-three years. And so, there were a lot of pain there, a lot of, true, appreciate him and him, Jason and Ken, the work they did, try to, try to balance all that. They're going to have to work really hard on getting people on the trucks. And they're going to have enough flexibility in the enhancement funding. We're, they're a private entity, so we don't, we can't tell them what, not our role, to direct or tell them how to man those trucks, provide the funding, because they're like a private company. They're contracted service, that's what it is. And so, hopefully through that, places like Brassfield, that has a, is one, is the busiest department, county, volunteer department, county, they'll have the ability to put one or two, based on the criteria provided by the consultant, that is why they, they have other population tax proportionality, that is why they have that number. But there's not a single department on there that, if you scroll up, or if you scroll up, if you look at all the departments, there's just not a single department on there that, that you look where they were, you know, other than your, other than your full-time department, and where they're, where, where that potential to be significantly improved on.
One of the things I see is a lot of this, we're going the same way of past twenty-third, where it's all just been one lump sum. Now, you're having a couple of extra dollars. So.
But that's a, just, think about where we were a year ago. We weren't sure any of the departments were going to sign the contracts or fill out budgets, that's right, they're all under contract, they're all submitting their budgets, right? We're still kind of, you know, there's still a, a little hiccup here and there, but I think we actually got from A to B the way we needed to and the way we wanted to. I feel, I feel really good about that. I think Jason and, and everybody, the fire commission members should feel good about that. That was a, that was a major achievement, because it was not at all a foregone conclusion. We were wondering what would happen if, you know, because some of the fire departments were like, here, I'll give you the keys, you run it, right? And we're not signing that contract and so on, right? You all were at some of the meetings, I've heard some of that chatter. But I, I think, you know, we've kind of stuck to our guns, show a little flexibility, the fire commission too, here and there. For example, with the, the twenty thousand dollars, right, out of the kind of fund balance of the fire tax fund to help them get ready to have some daytime folks there full-time. And I, so I, I think this is, this has been a really, actually a good outcome. Kind of a, a messy, complicated process, but, but we really succeeded in, in such every way that I think we were trying to.
As long as the county volunteer service, of, of contracted services, we have launched that with the era that we should have been in twenty or fifteen. So, it's not, it wasn't done, it was, it was painful. But I got a lot of respect for them too, because I kind of put the perspective of, all the years I was doing this for this, now you want to do this, 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 this. Again, they're taxpayers just like we are as well. So, it was give and take, but appreciate every.
I, I'm just glad that we're not spending a lot of money out to, to departments, something like that, and looking at, looking at those way ahead. I mean, they're putting some money aside for it, for it, for a patch up those days ahead.
The lowest point areas without coverage, fire commission, that like under, trying to tackle that.
Yes, it is, and, and, and I think, and, and I don't know what the amounts are today, but I think in, in our, in the fund balance that we have is growing. And one of the things that kind of, kind of manager, I want to go back to one of the questions that came up, I wanted to, the department of treasures was, is that, are we, when are we going to begin to start gaining interest or put aside our money and start being the best perhaps in that? So, we can start seeing this return on that funding that's not.
So, and I think that, that came up before, and Steve, I know we talked about it, part of the challenge was, I mean, as the, as that fund balance grows, there may be some that will be safe to sort of invest, because we know, for example, there's going to be no need to touch this for this a year, right? But, but, you know, if, if somebody maybe, you know, any money that you might need to spend down in a shorter timeframe, right, you don't want to put into a long.
It's not there yet, but that's the ultimate. But yes, that is where we vote, we're looking at, this is looking at the metric, reexamining the metric. There's a lot of discussion on how would you order to find the data that comes out of the timeline, whether it's more precise, giving the marks where everyone feels that data that's.
Sir, one more quick thing, to catch on, we've been talking about the last ten areas, look on the map of the white areas. Our office is working with a couple of departments now, and some of our border fire departments surrounding counties, they're signing automaticated areas, those areas, on a turn, some of those white areas, the last ten, into probably a six, by just signing an automaticated. One of the biggest ones would probably be that, because we're running away from fire chiefs. Sign on that, brass, cover that, that little corner, that southeast corner, where like up in Maris area, the last ten area that Maris.
Jason, that rating, that reduction of rating, which means the better rating, is actually what he's told in the homeowner's, homeowner's fire policy, correct?
Six is the lowest you can get.
Did you about how, on average, how much less that is for homeowners?
Several hundred dollars if you, if some of these more expensive houses, it's right now current, that's being.
So, message with that is, is that you see an increase in the fire tax, but you do all these agreements, in some places you should see a benefit of better home.
Homeowners should see a lower fire.
That's what I'll talk about.
One, you know, filling these holes, right, is also a little more complicated. The more you think about it, the more you realize it's not, not quite as simple as, let's just build a station and then we'll magically have solved our hole, right? We, figuring out if there's an existing fire department that is willing to take that on, right, and, and staff that station is a question. And what happens if there isn't? We don't know, right? That station's not worth very much unless you put a truck or two in it. Where does the money for that come from? Who, who does that belong to and how does that work? And, you know, as we decide what kinds of departments have. I don't know if or when it might become, and I do know that as Durham County, for example, got more involved with more of the volunteer fire departments, through contracts and so forth, they started trying to standardize the trucks that were bought, right? Right now, people have everything under the sun, right? There's all kinds of different vehicles. Nothing is interoperable or exchangeable, and they've been trying to work towards sort of standardizing equipment to some degree, which has a variety of different benefits. So, as we, as we build new stations and start being a little more involved with the purchase of new equipment, that, there may come a time when we start getting into conversations like that. As noted in, back to your question, Chair Karen, that is on the radar of the fire commission to start wrestling that set of questions.
I'm sitting right in, right in, I can throw a rock. I can throw a rock each, each way.
Don't start, don't start any fires. Because it's going to be wild.
Right.
Okay.
I'll be dead in a while.
Hopefully not from fire. Any more, any more fire tax, fire protection related questions? I think you remember, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, right, but, but departments like Stovall were aware, when we were having and wrapping up the conversation about the, why am I blanking on it? Enhancement funding, right, and the criteria that departments like Brassfield were going to get a lot more than Stovall was going to get. And my response to them was, you know, we talked at great length at multiple different junctures about the enhancement criteria, right? This isn't the last chance for us to talk about those, and if those prove to be inequitable in some fashion, there's nothing saying that the fire commission can't revisit those. But that said, right, I haven't heard from you what you think is inequitable, right, about giving more money to a department that may respond to many multiples of the calls that you respond to. You still need trucks, right? You still need people in air packs and so forth. And again, that, right? And of course, and if you look at Stovall, right, they're tripling their funding. So, it's not like they've really been left out in the cold. They, they have significant new resources too, but it's hard to look at, at all the data for the criteria that, that we had took multiple passes at for Brassfield that shows the greater need, I'm just picking those two as, as, to illustrate the point.
Well, it's a good point, because the folks in the southern end of the county were complaining before we put enhancement, that they were not equity funded, that they were a greater tax base, and where was their money?
They were, they were, they were complaining, the folks in the southern part of the county were complaining at the last fire commission meeting, that they, they were the ones who might have to pay more per hour for daytime fire drivers than folks up north, because maybe it's just like more competition for, for labor down in the southern part of the county. And I said, I mean, my response to that is, that is in part why you're getting an extra hundred thousand dollars more than Stovall with your enhancement funding, you know, is, is in recognition of some of that greater need, different kind of market, right? You can use, that's flexible money, you can use that to pay, you've got to pay three dollars an hour or more to get a certified firefighter in your station compared to Stovall. There's, there's the money. All right. If there are no more questions on that topic, next topic is fund balance review, and I think Harry is going to pull an item up here. Before we dive into the details there, just to share a little bit of a backdrop, I know that, you know, that we have, right, our local policy that requires us to carry a minimum of thirty percent of our general fund expenditures. The closer you get to that thirty percent kind of level, the, the uneasier, I feel uneasier, you know, probably all of you feel, one reason for that is that the bottom part of that fraction is basically our annual budget, right? If that changes, then thirty percent of what that is also changed. There's a good reason to carry more than thirty percent, because otherwise you will have to dump more money in there to equal thirty percent of your new budget. So, we have been attempting to keep very close, real-time track of, of our fund balance. We get kind of, we thought we knew, for example, what we started this year with, and then, you know, we get the audit back and they go through all of our numbers with a more fine-toothed tone, and so that number may get adjusted a little bit by the auditors, and again, we hope to have that number at the end of October this year. We didn't get it until mid-January, which is kind of late in the game. But anyway, so you'll see that, that top line number, twenty-three, seven ninety-one, that was after putting, I mean, correct, that's after we put three point six million into the current year budget. We thought the percentage was higher, and that was sort of, that's what happened when the auditors came back. They actually dropped the true level of unassigned fund balance. We did not intentionally go that low. But then you can see all of the adjustments since June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, July first, right?
What page is this on in?
It's not, it's, I don't think it's.
No, you do have a page on, 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 section six, that'll give you a chart, section six, page nine, appropriate fund balance, that you have the total and the percentage, but this is, this is, this is the accounting throughout this fiscal year, how we arrived at what we estimate to be unassigned fund balance at the end of the year.
You can see there that we, we started adding back in, and pretty quickly, I think, we're back up at a level that probably for this year's general fund budget was at thirty percent. We have a lot of budget amendments, and each budget amendment, you know, often will have some positives and some negatives. We have grant revenue coming in, or, or other amounts going out, but they net out. I think, to make a long story short, all of that changing, the last full line there is an important one, and we were doing this kind of calculation at the end of last year too. We've been through revenues pretty carefully this year, and you know that in the current year, we had sales tax issues, Medicaid hold harmless, so what, what was keeping me up at night was the possibility that we, at the end of the year, we needed to have enough saved up unspent money to fill those holes, so that we didn't create another charge against fund balance, right? I was worried that with all those, some of those revenues going backwards, that we might end up in a deficit, and instead of being able to add to our fund balance at the end of the year, we might end up having to kind of backfill it, or, or budget more money going into next year just to refill fund balance. So, that's partly why, I don't know, two or three months ago, we kind of put a, not a pause, but any, any purchase order over a thousand dollars had to come to me. And, you know, basically kind of put, put brakes on a lot of things. I haven't said no to very many of those, but I think there's a lot of purchase orders that never get written, because people realize that one's not going to get past the gatekeeper, I don't need to write this up in the first place. So, we've had a fair bit of unspent money. Also, I, I didn't see this one coming, but with interest rates so much higher, our investments have brought back in about a million dollars in additional revenue that we didn't anticipate this year. That's great, right? Kind of an unanticipated benefit of higher interest rates. So, in the end, we, we believe at the end of this fiscal year, we will be able to, after filling the holes for Medicaid hold harmless and so forth, we'll be able to put, posted two point three million back into unassigned fund balance. I'm glad for that. We had accidentally subtracted a, a large sum of money twice from our unassigned fund balance, and so even as of the Friday before the recommended budget, there were some things that weren't really adding up in my brain, and we had to sit for several hours to figure out what was going on. I'm glad it saved me to discover the double subtraction, so rather than ending up significantly below our, our self-imposed kind of limit, we, we should be somewhat above it and comfortable going into that.
Can I manage two questions? What? How much of unassigned fund balance would be at thirty percent? And then?
Meaning, how far above thirty percent are we?
Yes. Yes, and then the other question is, is that, I'm not saying that's a good policy, but are we? Is that policy too restrictive? The economic times in which we're in?
I think it's a good one to try to stick to. It would be my goal for us to be able to stick to. I think it's a, it is a good place to be. It gives us a significant rainy day fund, but you really don't know what's coming. And, and even if the LGC, I think their requirement is eight percent, something like that.
But they actually have a requirement. Right, and they.
Well, that's like, get that or get lower. I don't know, they missed like one twelve. But your fund balance, but that's.
It impacts things like your credit rating too, right? You know, they want to see that you have plenty of wiggle room, right? In case your tax revenues don't come in or you're still going to be able to pay your mortgage, basically. So I, I wouldn't want to change that. I, I would want us to keep working really hard to stay within that policy.
What are the other guardrails? Size on the platform. Drawn player.
Death ratio.
Death ratio. Death ratio, is there one more?
There was the ten-year, um, there's ten-year payout, debt to assessed value, and debt service revenue. And we're, we are within all of those and even if we adopted our CIP, we'd stay within all of them.
We used, when we did the CIP, if I remember correctly, you used all of those, uh, I think you filled with that in, but I think it was the oldest. I don't know. But we used all those ratios, we were well within the parameters. We're gonna get that.
Yeah. And then we are, we're way within them now and we would continue to be within them even if we did not.
Even with the CIP, right? That's what we did.
Those policies are in your budget book in section eight? Everyone wants to reference.
One other thing is that one might look at, um, thirty-one point one nine percent and think, yeah, but next year's budget is significantly larger than this year's budget. So again, when you, and then thirty percent happens. As it worked out, however, this year's budget, in, in some strange ways, actually, did it end up being actually larger than next year's proposed budget? Or very close to it? And that had to do, while he was looking for that, it had to do with, for example, we were pulling money out of assigned fund balance, right? We had the, the million dollars coming in from the state. There were a variety of one-time revenues that come in. Thirty-one point one nine percent is thirty-one point one nine percent of that adjusted higher number. And so next year's budget, actually relative to the amended budget for the current year, is very similar. And so basically, it. So even next year with, with a budget that, if you look at the original budget for the current year and, and next year's proposed budget, they're five, five and a half million dollars apart. And so thirty percent of those two numbers would be significantly different. But thirty-one point one nine percent is of the amended budget for this current year, which is much larger than what we started with for all those reasons that I was explaining now. So we're, we're healthy and in a good spot. If, if we were to adopt the budget that has been proposed or something close to it, we would still be above our thirty percent, um, policy.
I think the commission lays with all due respect, I really don't think we want to get thirty percent. I mean, I think that's a good benchmark. Anything we can do to stay above it, I would agree with that, with the spending day fund.
And I hope that, you know, we, we have made some, as bad as Medicaid hold harmless has been this year, for example, like actually backwards by a million dollars, you know? I, I say to myself, boy, I, I hope for some, um, some growth in that next year. And then our trusty management analyst, uh, pulls out a graph of the Medicaid payments and the sales taxes says, it doesn't look like it's going to get better next year. It looks like it's going to get worse. We better, we better budget less next year. So we budgeted a little less and we'll see how it works out, but, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that, um, I can't remember where I was going with that. I, I don't think we are looking, we're looking with clearer lenses all the time, I think, in the future. And kind of doing better, better predicting, better revenue trending and making real estate better, what our revenues are likely to be. Any more questions on fund balance? Bob's doing math. Russ is writing notes.
Tell that one. I did, uh, my last. Salary and compensation. What percentage of our overall? I didn't see one. I'm not saying it's not in there. I looked at a lot of graphs, but I didn't see one. Typically that gives you a, uh, an idea of how healthy your operation budget is in comparison to those.
I'm, I'm just putting it off the top of my head. I think, I think salary is close to twenty million, so that's, that's a little bit under a quarter or a budget.
There was somewhere probably between twenty and thirty percent, um, of our total budget is salary and compensation.
I was trying to back into it, but, you know, if it's four percent merit, right? Which, which actually, I think we budgeted for about three and a half or two point three. Equals eight hundred and nine thousand. So maybe, you know, one percent of our, one percent of our total payroll might be around two hundred fifty thousand. So a hundred percent would be twenty-five million-ish. Point three, point four, point five million.
So a penny will go to what?
Yes, that's another way of thinking about, uh, a merit pay.
A merit.
Yes. Because we're, we're right at, I think our most recent decision was eight sixty-eight. I was a little conservative with the eight sixty, but our tax numbers continue to wiggle a little, a teeny bit, right? Because they're still processing appeals and so forth. So proposed budget does.
But I mean, what was that?
But one ten.
One ten.
Because not everybody will take you up on it.
I understand.
And then also just to. Long for some point.
All right. All right. I think with that, um, we can go back to, um, other topics by commissioners. This could really be anything. This could be going back to surface expansions. There is actually, especially while Jason is here, there's one, a nonprofit request for funding that I wanted to discuss with the board. Um, but I think we'll, we'll do that last after we've kind of worked through any of the, any additional questions or comments that people have.
Do you want to go around the horseshoe? Do you want to go by the door? I, I didn't look, to be honest with you, I did not look at this one. Did not recognize it. I did not because I'm, I'm concerned about what we are asking.
Right.
So, um, just, just so you know, I mean, obviously it was discussed if they want to, but you start adding those in, you get what you recommend, but I mean, that's, again, I'm sure you had a reason for taking it now.
Uh, and I'll, I'll mention to you again, I, I mentioned this earlier, right? But Joe Stallings came to me and said, I don't need an admin assistant, right? I need, I need a little bit more of a workforce. And even now we can tell him, can I, can, can we talk about reclassing that position? And he wanted to move it up ten pay grades. And I said, Joe, I have added more than, what I have already tried to add to this budget already is keeping me up at night. I can't do it. But then we, that forced us into a different kind of conversation, which is, he looked at his middle position, Audrey's old position, that I, I probably don't need to pay somebody that much for the number two position. Can we carve some money out of that and reclass both of them? And I can, I can redraw both positions and get two appropriately paid workforces, you know, in my department to do what I need. And I said, I've added, right? Let's do it. So I think, you know, sometimes necessity is the mother of invention, right? And, and just kind of the reality that we're not going to be able to add in certain kinds of things kind of forces us back to the drawing table to come up with more creative solutions to get what we need. Did we trim any of our nonprofits last year? A number of, some of them didn't even apply.
We had one that's not applied. We look under. Other.
What number?
Thirteen.
Thank you.
And go to the back of page twelve. That's your nonprofits and funding. The other one that we didn't get an application for, we should have. Much flat funding. Recommending fifteen thousand for eighty back in, fifteen hundred for Kent Butler Society, which is not previous to five.
We did get a significant, um, increase request from Franklin Vance Warren Opportunity Agency. Um, I asked them twice for, um, more information on Randolph County residents that they serve with all of their programs. They did not respond to either email. It was the same issue, um, Durham County was part of a, a Patam Orange. Randolph County might have been part of it. But, you know, that was always a little unclear to me. Um, I don't know if, if any of you read in the newspaper recently, there were a number of members of national community action organizations that were indicted, um, felony investment charges. But, um, that may neither be here nor there. I, my, my own gut and history kind of leads me to, to apply a little more scrutiny. And, um, often, you know, the organizations very least sort of, they, they tend to invest a little more where they are principally located. And so, you know, as a, as a county that's kind of a, a county away, making sure that the programs that they have are proportionally benefiting Randolph County residents seems like a, kind of a basic question for us. So I ask that question, and you're back. Counting time to recommend. Never mind all the other pressures on our budget, it seems like a appropriate environment, which is recommended.
Uh, not really. I kind of ought to say a lot, but, you know, and if it does not submit information, submit information. I, I do just, um, remind the board, I hope that a third. Might be a committee that might come up. For. We're hoping for it. So I would hold off. There ain't really, nothing really. Pressure appropriate, really. As a management. I talk all night about public. That. Hope it. We have special time this week. We're going to be looking at like other departments like the library. Get on the list.
So we have, um, obviously they, they had some expansionary requests that are on the list of expansion items. We do have a, um, kind of a. A chart of departmental expenditures with personnel taken out. So you, because the personnel costs, right, of the approved positions are known. So they're not really in the mix, right? We can't say, you don't need that, right? We've already approved a number of them. Um, so we do have that, and I don't know if we have copies of that. You can protect it and, and or print copies if we know.
Other sections.
Print copies. Me, too. So, uh, we do have that, um.
It's not in your book. It's, it, you have, you have this expenditure summary under, um, section six, but it, it precludes personnel in your book. This is taking out the personnel. Just operating.
I think that maybe this will help. So budget to budget, right, is, is what we did, right? That's how you did the percentage changes.
It is, um, original budget to, uh, proposed budget, yes, permanent budget.
So this column to this column. So governing board went up almost not at all. Um, administration, again, minus personnel, went up six point seven percent. That, I think, was just our lease of our facility. Information technology went up a fair bit, but again, there's still a lot happening there with the centralization of phone and copier contracts. So that's, that is money that is being taken from other departmental budgets and put there. Not, not approved. We're just centralizing the management budget for copiers and for public.
So that's the reality that likely demonstrated as efficiency. Maybe.
Correct, across the board, like taking, taking county wise. Human resources, uh, went up, uh, that also is, they, they pay a portion of, of leases and then we'll be moving over to, to Williamsburg, saying with, with finance, right? And these are, these are relatively small increases. Again, right, when you take personnel out of our departmental budgets, typically there's not a whole lot left there, right? So even a few thousand dollars may create what looks like a big swing, but when you look at it, it's not actually a, a very large swing. So again, uh, HR, finance, both have just new leases. Uh, internal auditor is down, but again, that's a three hundred dollar difference. Board of election, reduced contract labor services. We'll see how that plays out again, right? Actually, we just executed a new contract labor because we were having trouble filling the county budgeted positions. And we're getting into a real, on board clearly. And overall, I think there, it was just a kind of jifting money around within the department, right? From the personnel line to contract or back. But there weren't, weren't any. Register of deeds, automation and preservation, but that's coming out of her register of deeds revenue. That's not a county control fund. Administration, actually down a little bit. Workhouse capital, outlay. Workhouse capital outlay. We have to budget for, you know, chairs, furniture, furnishings, periodic carpet replacements on, um, did move some stuff out too, I think. The pest contract is moving in out of that.
We're gonna see that in.
I mean, did you explain the, the, the recent DSS one? I'm not sure I understand.
Oh, the incentive funds, like your child support, the, the toy you talked about this morning, county was budgeting that entire amount every year, just rebudgeting it. So it's like four hundred thousand. Well, we take a different approach. We're only budgeting the amount they expect to, the issue that we do down to a hundred thousand. That three hundred thousand, when I go back, it's restricted one thousand.
So we have been accumulating these incentive funds from the state and we kept budgeting as if we were gonna spend all of them. We weren't spending all of them. We are trying to spend those funds down and substitute some of them for a little bit of expenditure, but the rest were basically not included.
Look, that goes back in the hour.
It's restricted funds.
Right.
Right. For DSS, like the child support.
But it's kind of earmarked there.
Correct. It does not appear, and that's the, the reduction in their overall operating budgets really is a reflection of us not budgeting.
Things like this, right? These, these small decreases could be, right, their portion of, like a couple of phone contracts and, and their portion of a copier contract.
That's, that's.
Moving up to IT. So if you see the small fractional decreases, that's because that's being centralized up to IT. Services, uh, down, production capital outlay and arts, not included. That service.
Look at the debt service, so it would be more apples to apples. So that budget would actually be reflected of, like, the operation.
I've had some conversations. Have not really entirely, uh, whether it makes sense to show the debt service or, you know, for example, for a senior services building in the senior services annual budget or just to put it all in the capital.
But if you did that, would you want to do it all, everything? Would you want to do it for your detention center?
Which is what I did. All of the numbers on here, if correct, the law enforcement center does not include that.
Right. So you take it all out and put it all in.
For this purpose, because I knew we were really comparing operations across. Those debt service numbers are what they are.
Right.
I took it out of this.
This is operational.
Right.
And I was just getting at a different point. Where do we show and itemize?
Debt service is operational.
Okay.
You lost it.
Right. Okay, so library, again, that's probably just phones and copiers. We had a, we had an interesting conversation about how the United Way of Work.
One thing I'd like to know is how much library. And have they, and have they looked at any alternatives?
I know that, um, the state, I don't know that they require that, but the State Library Association has a number of, and they provide significant grant funding to the library. And they have interesting kind of maintenance effort requirements. Uh, so that if you, if you decrease your local funding, you will only be able to pull down even less of the state funding patches.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really talking about doing away with funding, but looking at, looking at other alternative methods.
Um, soil and water conservation, um, we are now paying for that out of our stormwater fee revenue, so that we don't need to budget any local funds for that anymore. And actually, that, that whole position is now being funded and it's operating. Recreation, increased request for mini grant funding. I talked a lot about mini grants, but catch us up.
Sure, I think there were over a hundred thousand dollars requested this year. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee will, and to finalize their recommendation. But I put the full amount in the budget just to make these come back and get more funding. Don't know if that's gonna happen yet or not. That's gonna, that would come to you in July for approval to fund that with their recommendation. Like, I took the full amount that was requested.
That might where Bill Ball got some money two years ago for Paul.
So, you know, that, that's a somewhat.
That's an option.
Expansion, expansionary approach. On the other hand, right, I also think that funding is a good kind of influence and goodwill tool with our municipalities and also, you know, even if we cut that in half, right? Cut ninety-five thousand or a hundred thousand out of our budget. You get something for that, right? But, but there's a trade off there. And we'll, we'll see. The other nice thing about if, if we decide to only fund half of it in July or whenever, right, had under ninety-four thousand budgeted, that gives us, right, an extra little reserve there that, whatever, go back into fund balance.
So that line also includes in addition to the mini grant application, that includes the allocation that we give municipalities every year for their recreation. And also includes the, uh, contribution, I think, to my court fireworks. There's two things in there. I think the mini grant amount, I wanted to think about a hundred thousand, almost around that. Rest of it is allocation.
What are, what are those contributions to other?
So the, all of the, the five municipalities, we give an allocation based on, um, three dollars and forty-one cents per person in their jurisdiction. Um, the committee just kind of use that every five years. The, I think the allocation remained the same in twenty twenty when the, the only thing that would be populated itself. It was just a flat, um, allocation for them every.
What is it, my mental calculator? It's just for municipalities?
Mm-hmm. It totals, um, seventy-nine thousand dollars. The largest contribution to Oxford is twenty thousand, smallest is.
Do they even, do I swear they have that much?
Then a straight line. Primarily it was a, I remember like for programming, for programming. I wouldn't say that's right. But there's never, there hasn't been like a report due back. It was just an allocation that they.
Mini grants. One side of all.
And where did that, you know, where that policy came from?
I have no idea. It's in the way for, as long as I've been in the county, we, three more. That information is in section nine, on page twenty-one. Municipal funding program, these, um, energy grants.
Of, of the grace of the.
Yeah, it's just something to, I don't know what else to talk about. So those programs are described on that page, uh, section nine, page twenty-one.
They should at least write us a nice thing.
Yes.
I haven't seen. Um, we can give a little more information on that. Parks and grounds has gone down significantly. And that was.
They had new capital outlay requests this year. We had a few projects in there last year that we probably aren't going to do. They did request to remember a trailer and we pulled them to hold off and repair what they have. So that's why their, their budget went down.
Tourism is paid out of the DDA budget.
Yeah, the only thing in tourism that hits the county budget is the cost of salary.
Inspections would invest in it. This is another kind of a decrease that would, that would, um, you could see in harness with more vehicles, it would be more obvious, but their budgets got scraped with the central budget as well. And that happened after July one. So they started with that money and then it got scraped over late August. Um, planning went up. That's the budgeting for the Campo study. That's basically, uh, all of that. Addressing the budget down a little bit, that budget. Construction administration has gone up. We are looking at having to replace some closed circuit camera systems and door, electronic badge access door systems. We're, I don't quite understand how we got to this point, but the, the system that was running the Williamsburg Street and the courthouse was on its last legs and being run by, it sounded like a R eight eight hundred. It was limping on and, and as, as opposed to paving. So.
That wasn't advanced.
It was a pretty good system.
I agree.
Should be worth something. Um, construction projects up by six point four percent again. This, I think, is our, Scott's not here, but our budget for repaving, our budget, you know, for sort of, um, parking lots, writing, things like that. So it kind of goes up and down. You won't always spend, you know, there's usually a couple hundred thousand left in that budget at the end of every year. That's Scott all by himself trying to manage a whole bunch of different things. Not so much the several hundred thousand dollars worth of work wasn't needed just if he didn't have the bandwidth by himself and manage all of that and the fires at the start. Economic development, um, this is an interesting one. So up by a post forty thousand, I have thought it quite important to follow Joe's lead and listen carefully to him. Tells us kind of what tools he thinks he needs to put economic development work here in town. Because I don't think you've really had that before. And I think you've gotten a pretty good taste thus far of his acumen. And, um, I think in the larger scheme of things, and this was true of his salary, true of other things, right? But, you know, we stretched to, to get him what he needed salary wise to come here with the county. But in the end, under twenty thousand dollars in terms of economic dollars for the county, it would be a problem to budget.
I couldn't reject. So we had our first meeting with him, economic development, uh, hall group. Remember walked away saying, "Best meeting." That says a lot.
And, and I don't, didn't tell his own story, but when we interviewed Joe, it sort of came back to his folder with the various resumes, like, "I don't need these more if we found our person." And I think we have found our person. And I want to give him the tools that he believes he needs, that he knows he needs. Let's see. Big shift here, right? Uh, all of the operational expense for the sheriff's vehicles have also been scraped over this week. I think that, um, you know, that also, I mean, I don't think the capital outlay is included. Was that included?
No, just, well, I think he had some capital outlay that was supposed to be covered, but primarily fuel and air. But if you think there was, it'd end up with some.
I would say that that has been a little bit of a double edged sword, but I think on balance is really working in our favor. That, and I mean that in a sense of oversight, financial oversight. So I think, for example, now that fuel, right, and vehicle outfit and so forth is not in the sheriff's budget, he may not care as much how much fuel is. On the other hand, right, uh, he's not sitting on, I forget what the capital outlay for sheriff's vehicles would have been in a typical year, right? But many hundreds of thousands of dollars. And once it's in the sheriff's budget, the sheriff can spend it on whatever he wants to spend, including it is not on capital outlay. So I think we're in a better spot now. All of the, you know, all of the expenditures on, on anything, they're really in our control. David is watching fairly carefully. For example, we'll get a big, uh, up, outfit, you know, cost request, uh, I sent from finance. I will send that over to David. I said, "Is this known to you? Is this within our budget? Are we planning for this?"
Yes.
No.
Right.
Usually he's already on top of all those expenditures. And with, yeah, and I'll just add to that as part of oversight is, uh, they're keenly aware that what they say in maintenance, fuel, they know it's. They know that, and we're still keeping track of how much that is.
Do we have any idea? So, so my question would be. That's great. Thank you. But how much are we spending for those that live forty miles from a east, west, or southern border of Randolph County? And mileage cost for that deputy visiting county? I understand that everyone does a county, but we have a forty mile, not radius, but two border county. So do we have any idea what that costs?
At this moment, we don't. Like I said, um, we'll, we'll look into that. We just have, we'll have to run a report and get all the address that we just take up.
Yeah, I mean.
But we don't have a sense right now.
Yeah. And, and the only reason I ask that question is that sheriff has full authority to have a vehicle policy of his choosing. But again, it goes back to what I said earlier today. It's like, at, at some point, you know, it's like the burden being shifted through the taxpayer. And, and these are the taxpayers that are asking us questions. And, and, and so it's not whether I agree or disagree with the policy. It's simply put that I'm having to answer to taxpayers who want to know why someone can live forty miles outside the county, not in the radius, drive to work and then drive another fifteen, twenty miles to work.
I would, I would add to it that it's often a little more, I mean, we can see with the geotags where, where the vehicles are. We know when, or we, we know generally, right? If this is like a eight to five, Athens, well, they shouldn't have data on people anyway. But, but, you know, we, in theory, we can know what shift somebody is on. But it turns out, right, that with prisoner transports or overtime work or whatever, it's a little bit hard to tell what miles are kind of those personal miles.
Yeah, and I don't know much. I, I don't, it's not realistic for that. I, I'm just saying, I'm encouraged, unfortunately, to communicate with the sheriff that, you know, is that truly a burden that we want to shift with the taxpayer for routine daily transportation versus, um, a radius which still allow to drive outside the county. But then takes into consideration that if you go in for the northern borders, east or west, and then travel down toward Oxford, you're traveling another fifteen, twenty miles plus the forty miles. And that adds up over time.
How we develop our budget for sheriff's vehicles, how to average across the market, about thirty-five, forty dollars per vehicle. So, I have an extreme example of someone from Oxford averaging.
This is best, this is probably the best.
Uh, we can, we can, and we'll be better than that.
Yeah, I, I, again, I, I don't want to burn up county resources, just because this is a conversation with the sheriff, with the modify. But at the end of the day, is that the burden is, everyone needs to realize that burden is difficult to track.
One thing, you know, that. One thing, you know, that I'm sure the sheriff would point out, and if you're willing, that's worth considering in advance of him pointing it out, right, that policies like that, right, equal view as a recruitment, right, you can get better people at the salaries we're offering if you can cast a wider net, right, which, although the thing's being equal is probably true, but, but we can still ask, is that juice worth that squeeze, right, how wide a net does it make sense for us to cast when they're driving a county vehicle and you can count your gas to go all that way? Not a bad sort of question. Um, detention center down a little bit, um, emergency communication up a little bit, buy material, saying I don't really know what is working behind that exactly.
Oh, that was their, um, their service expenditure before the, giveaway, ten dollars and then they also.
That's twelve thousand dollars, yeah, they had a small increase, which is on your list of increases for certain motion materials, that's like to get signed up for our emergency calling system. Animal management is down, mostly that's fleet related, emergency management, outlay is down, eight thousand, basically what that is?
I think it's probably associated with the rain.
Rain?
Yeah, I think it was part of the, it was.
I don't know how many of you noticed, but the, um, the generator is being installed as we speak, they're going to test it tomorrow and hopefully we get, you know, a massive storm on Wednesday and here we could.
Well, your project was done, twenty one thousand. It was booked at Capital Island.
Forest Street is up a little bit, I don't know what that is exactly.
And I couldn't tell, just operations, we get that budget straight from the state, and we just plug in the number.
For those of you, it's an easy one to forget, right, the reason, that's basically an insurance policy, and if we have a big forest fire, we get access to all of the state resources at no cost to us, so in some years, that may feel like a little bit of a, a wasted investment, but if you have a big brush fire or a forest fire, you can be glad you have all the state goers and aircrafts.
If you look at the actual expenditure. I think the budget would not necessarily spend all.
All of this together, and this is where, right, like the IT, that sort of comes out, and we'll watch the, the aggregate year over year increase of all of those operational budgets go up into one, is pretty.
Are we going to be okay with the extension, I knew we got. Fish, oh, current, place scale, would that take care of?
Yes. Did that run through the state?
Oh, we don't want, okay, that's not ours.
I did talk with Tyrone Fisher of the process, I'll be involved with that, but they run that whole process. Any, any questions, last question, others?
I don't have anything.
I'm good.
I have one, one quick thing, if you want to follow along, it's sort of on page six, section six, page seven, some time ago, I had David run some numbers for me on.
What page do you?
Uh, section six, page seven, and it's the, uh, sales and other taxes, so we don't have, we don't utilize Article forty six, the restricted order set, sales tax, have to have voter referendum, have to notify board of election, forty five days of an election, has to be an even number of years, and estimate from, what I'd gotten before was five million, four million, four, and what else? Those are the basic nutshell, have to go to the quarter's ask for the sales tax, obviously that, any, sales tax, what happened to county, have it, three or four that have got the one trans. A lot of dollars on the table. For voters party, most everybody, course that sales tax. Noticeable, sit down, pay bill. That much I can, action, property tax.
How long would it take for us to, you already paid, that'd be twenty four, twenty five days before the election.
Could be put on November ballot.
If we'd had time to do it.
I don't know how much, when you do referendums, you're limited on the advocacy, or it's like campaign, tell people why it's a great idea?
You could tell them what it would be spent on, so if you're doing NGO bond referendum for school or a library or whatever, you, you can't be working too hard to sell them on it, but you can definitely say what the funding would be, so if we wanted to dedicate that to whatever.
Could you say it's a bank of general funds?
That serves on a new pool.
In, in other words, you, you could do it to recreation, you could do it to public schools, you could do it to capital more generally, what's your capital outlay protection, or what do you protect?
So that's going to shift here pretty significantly, it's a good question, but I just want to make sure we're kind of.
No, I, because I want, this, this race somewhere around one point four.
One and a quarter, one point four? That's about the amount, it's a little more than, than the new amount of capital outlay, sort of the maintenance funding that I'm recommending.
So if you did, that would, that would give us one point four million.
If you leave the tax rate alone, the property tax rate alone, but you add the sales tax gives us one point four million. Again, but good to remember, right, as we just experienced, that sales tax can be a little volatile, right, it can be one point four million one year and six hundred thousand the next year, whatever.
If you face the last year's sales.
Sales tax are complicated, they're not always. Where our number comes from.
Is there ever a number?
It was. And you could, you could say that your margin gets high, that it wouldn't be, this is not a restricted one, some of the sales tax. Right, the, the state is collecting sales tax.
Say, also, if you save schools, you could save the capital outlay project, just doesn't rise at that.
You know, personally, I think there are a couple of interesting questions, if you think that referendum would pass, you know, you're asking people if they would like to be taxed, sometimes that could be a little bit of a perilous undertaking. The other thing is that, right, if these are things that we intend to fund anyway, what do we prefer as, as the tool that raises the revenue, right, there are interesting analyses, right, to sort of look at, is sales tax versus the property tax more or less regressive or progressive in terms of what it lands on? There is some portion of the sales tax that might be paid by outside people who are not Graham County residents at all, so that's, that's a consideration, you know, but it, again, if you, if you're pretty sure you're going to raise this money regardless, right, it really then becomes a, more of a question of, do we want to, do we want to do this special election for this topic, and, and then other questions like the regressivity, progressivity thing, how do we want to, what's the best way for us to raise this money that we intend to spend? But I, I appreciate you raising that, and that was a good, a good question for us to do a little bit of work on and have in our pocket, because it is an option that's available to us to put that out on a ballot. But. The presidential.
Like just the library, that was no break.
Yeah, I, that's a good point, that, that came up in Durham a decade ago or so ago too, because the question came up, didn't we dedicate that sales tax to this thing over here, and, and that is what people had said, right, that's how they had talked about it, but it couldn't actually go on the ballot exactly that way, I think the required ballot language is, is more straightforward, so the, the dedication of it, of that revenue to a particular end use would be more our philosophical statement, right, not, not necessarily legally binding.
Well, if you look at the tax revenue, it's all over the gate, school, this year, and then they look at it like the world.
But we could show them that we had done that, yeah, we, we could show them, but his point is a good one, but I think, I think you're, you typically, or maybe legally, what you can put on the ballot isn't that this is for motherhood and apple pie, right, it's just, this is the quarter men taxing, sales tax option. Notice, I don't know about that, look.
I got one, I got one, uh, I know, I know, I know what you're going to say, but, I'm cool, well, okay, I heard, because, uh, only thing I would want you to do was please call DOT and tell them to put that sign back up, but, but I don't know who's, who, who contracted those vehicles with the, with the tractor, they told it, that, that urgent sign down?
Or did they?
Yeah, tell them, please, back up.
Is it still lying there? Or did it disappear?
It disappeared, you know, we ran it over, boy, it's fine, boy, damn, anyway, but, uh, cause.
Alma and.
Hi.
We're going to be able to get Sandy to, to help with that, we'll, we'll figure it out. Tim, did you have any more? I have, I have one more, um, I'm going to walk around and out. What I'm handing out here is a, an application for outside. From Granville County Search and Recovery. I had not heard of this organization until mid-year, I think middle of this year, and I can't remember. Where this was, what budget did this live in, it was sort of a public, it was other, it looked like where the medical examiner was, and it had sort of some other weird things, and so, I said, what is this organization, well, they help with ground searches and body retrieval from any body of spilled water, funds are used to maintain equipment up to date, um, only department with boats in the county, um, and they are supported by Treemore, Butler, and STEM, I did contact, um, Mirador and the town managers in Treemore and Butler, STEM gives them five hundred a year, uh, Treemore, I think two thousand, and Butler fifteen hundred, we have been funding them at twenty thousand a year for quite a long time, on the fifth page, you'll see the number of calls that they have assisted with since twenty nineteen, which is six, um, and you can see what those calls were, and so, um, and then there's a roster of the members who are part of this. And I, I can't speak, and actually I wanted to give Jason a chance to speak, because I do believe they have been helpful in a couple of different circumstances, but it, it struck me that the level of funding and the level of service provided didn't necessarily match up completely, I would be more comfortable if we were closer to the level of funding that, that the two towns are, but again, I'm not in a great position to determine exactly how critical this kind of assistance might be to us when we need this kind of assistance, so Jason, if you can, if you can shed any light, that would be great.
Yes, they do grant government missing persons, um, their biggest test in term of county is the ability to search bodies of water, that's something I follow most, I have the ability, almost, I have the ability, so if someone were to drown, um, the last one I went to was a cargo of a bridge, um, two hours inside both trams, if, if someone to go ahead and look at the tow chains, tow hooks, and the rubber service to be able to recover the vehicle and the bodies, so they are only in county resources, yes, there is out, you can call mutual aid from other counties, but obviously.
They actually have divers?
They don't have divers, um, they're more recovery now, um, just because of the amount of members they have, actually return, dispatching or someone, body of waters, we started running, like that unless you have someone actually holding that body, just because of the amount of time that you go under, there is a load, that's right.
That's the group, the group that you get, uh, these people, they're paying, uh, stores, uh, put the store in the building, uh, areas that manage.
They moved up now, I have a problem, they have their own building. Yeah, I think to me, it's just for the one or two calls that go a year, it's a large money, it's a ton of money, but that, like I said, is our only option.
So if you were to have someone to call for Brown County, that'd be responded to by, delayed by the Durham County Sheriff's Department.
So if we didn't have it, we'd have to call Durham County, Banks County, um, Wake County, that would work with some counties.
That we had to be trouble with.
I've not ran into that, and I've not ran into that because we carry here, but do, go on, um, someone like would call on a bridge, we give, it was right on the state line, so awful case.
It's also.
I didn't want to interrupt.
No, you're good. So would this also be for pond, that's they was.
Anybody.
Body of water, so.
Body.
Somebody's pond, you know, that they ran off.
But they were just dragging, they were not sitting in divers.
Yeah, they were dragging. Dragging also.
Did none of our fire departments have the, uh, water recovery abilities that were dragging alone?
None have, none of our fire departments have.
What about the city of Oxford? What do they do about like that? Are they not paying?
So I, I, what my fear would be, if it's covered so much, they're going to fold.
So is Oxford not paying? They have, they have a number of body waters.
Um, I mean, the biggest one, obviously, that. Sure they have some ponds.
What do they? And the money's used to upkeep the boat? What, what, what they?
Upkeep, upkeep the boat, the vehicle, purchasing equipment. I can't say if they have a, a solar equipment where they may be able to start to locate the body.
Do they have annual?
I know they train frequently on, I, I've personally seen that. I know what I did at the land search class, um, I. I argued with people, I got some work from them.
They have other jobs.
But most of those people. A volunteer, they're not a career. It's just, it's a little bit different from fire departments, but most of the fire departments, a lot of them, some of them, I wouldn't say a lot, are career somewhere else. There's not a lot of departments.
How often do you give them? It's an annual base?
It's been annual for quite some time.
Oh, I know why it's happened on.
I don't like it. It hasn't gone up in, from me looking back at the overall records, I don't think it's gone up in.
Oh, the question I have then is, ten, twenty thousand dollars a year, how long?
I can tell you since I've been here in two thousand nineteen, it's been twenty thousand.
We got a balance of seventy six thousand dollars.
Part of that in their budget is a grant they received. They have to fight with their.
So where are they spending twenty? But my question is, and I'm saying that, what is spending twenty thousand dollars a year on?
A lot of the, a lot of the rescue equipment expires. A lot of the rescue equipment across the board has a ten-year shelf life. The rubber ball, life preservers, they have a shelf life. They have to have higher grade. Uh, white preservers, all of their seminars have to be certified and all of that. Yeah, there is a pretty substantial difference of.
You can answer the homeless, they work, there's a life.
Okay, so my question is, are they involved in life saving or recovery?
Recovery.
So. There, the incident's done, there's, life is lost. So that, does that mean that, other than, obviously, we care about family, but does that mean that we're concerned about CDC at that point? In other words, for mutual aid law. I'm trying to be empathetic, but I mean, if I had a child or somebody like they can't find, I don't want to get through them. It's a recovery at a certain point.
Yes and no, because the last thing we want is to have bodies blowed up when we don't want it to. If they can get, the quicker we can get on the water, the quicker we can locate them, better off we are to remove them from that body of water. If not, there's a certain amount of time that will upflow, next to get over, we've got life savings.
What is the last, so none of the calls since twenty nineteen look like a body recovery? Paul, did you know when the last time they recovered a body?
Um, I can tell you. One on Tom, I mean, we recovered both, recovered two bodies.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's the Harry Davis, recovered both, recovered two bodies. Um, you know who they were? Girlfriend and girlfriend, come off late. Come out of Virginia and going a little too fast and overbreath.
I know one of the searches, they did a four-line. They were working. They walked in, they, they actually went.
So to answer, if someone asked how long they've been funding them, it looks like since two thousand four. The allocation went from five thousand in two thousand seven, it was ten thousand in twenty thirteen, it's now twenty thousand.
So let's just say that you, if we didn't fund this, and we depended on mutual aid in other counties. How long would it be before they figured out, we're not funding anybody, we're paying. Yeah, yeah, you know, the other counties are spending their money to come here for mutual aid, you know, and.
Yeah.
To them, it's going to look like we're getting a free ride.
Here's another thing, I don't want like Oxford, you said how much they're giving budgets?
Thousand four, two hundred.
That's a lot of.
Eleven years.
Yeah.
Well, ten years.
Twenty years.
I guess what I'm saying, that's a lot of money to. I don't know what the boat looks like, the vehicles look like, but they.
It certainly had to update over the.
I mean.
Had a whole sheriff's army vehicle, they had a free.
It'd be nice for us to be able to see what equipment they do have, maybe, maybe it's a presentation by the person that runs. Maybe that's because, I'm not saying that it's bad, I'm just saying that. We're funded.
Yeah.
Their funding is a little bit more than that, because they were part of the ready. I can look at my records.
Have you seen other equipment, Jason?
Yes, I can say it. They got a pretty nice, they got a very nice solar system to be able to locate. Bodies or four vehicles without. They put the hook in the water, grab it in the hole, way of doing things. Um, they got a convoy.
Where's it stored?
Halliburton.
Halliburton. They have a, all their vehicles are stored in.
They maintain, I think somebody already asked this, they had to maintain some type of certification?
There are a couple of, I have state certifications that we do have to make.
So to use these stores.
Yeah, with.
What area?
They have to store like their boats, all indoors, just because of, they have to go in winter, they have something winterized.
This, uh, there were a couple of parts of the application that.
They can write a bill.
There were a couple of parts of the application that weren't filled in, but they, they got the request to fill out an application for the first time ever about a day or two after I found out that we had been paying them twenty thousand dollars a year for good bum wow. I thought, they're an outside nonprofit agency, they should be going through the same process that everybody else goes through. And since that didn't, that kind of hadn't been happening, it didn't happen in the same timeframe as the others, I wanted to put this in front of you. I think the idea maybe of having Mr. Brooks or somebody that they deem appropriate to come tell us a little bit more about the operation is probably a good idea. In the interim, we do need to have some amount of money kind of plugged in. I can't remember if we actually have the twenty thousand plugged in for now.
Updated roster.
Updated roster?
Yeah. I don't think Green's deal will back.
I don't think he's on call.
There's more numbers to think here than there are. People who don't live with the. I'm just pulling out one of the papers. That's the.
Probably because of cell phone.
It's not.
I know with those.
Oh, that's a big number.
Home phone. Same thing with Donnie Boyd. I'm sure that's his home phone. Loud to me.
When, when do you think would be a good time to have them come in? We can work that out, bring them to a board meeting or.
That we have to approve this budget like.
And so the one, one question would be, kind of, leave the funding set as is. Drop it down, or just have it, kind of, put it in the budget, but have kind of actual allocation of it pending the conversation with their folks.
I think it's kind of hard for me to make a decision what amount it should be. Now, obviously. Maybe. Talk to somebody, updated roster, photographs.
Give you a budget.
I mean. Placehold, placehold, I don't know. Placehold. Maybe not the whole amount, but the placeholder.
Is there any possibility they could talk to us this week?
I have to ask. I mean, I'm two of us.
I, that's what I was thinking too. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it has to be spent. We can leave it alone, and we can figure out, maybe they can, maybe somebody could come Wednesday, but if not, we'll work with them to find a time to have them come and address the board.
I hate to have a meeting Thursday.
There's already. I hope they leave it in there until we have the chance, but we'll be in there.
But we decided to not fund them at that level, and they go to the library and they see it in the budget. They said, well, we're too budgeted, there's twenty thousand, why are we only going to get ten?
Actually, this is anywhere.
So how do you feel about that, Mr. Jim?
They will come ask again, and we'll even see if you can.
If, if we, if it's in the budget and we just approved to leave it there until we've talked to them, and they go see that in the budget it said twenty and we only give them ten.
I'd be inclined to do it as other grants or something like that, so that you have some discretion to prove later that it's not directly allocated to them.
Put it in non-departmental. Put it in non-departmental or somewhere else.
Well, if you have plenty of time now and. That's right, that brings up a really good point, fire service. Always a process. Having a lot of review and all that kind of thing. And to that point, I have also been, and actually, you know, for like, for that additional forty thousand dollars in our funding, we did do a little service contract with KCI, and we've talked about moving all of our nonprofit funding agreements, which in principle, right, vettatorily are supposed to be service agreements, right? That, that we should be moving in that direction for all of our nonprofit funding, that they should be service agreements where it's clear what the county is getting or the funding that we're putting in.
A budget.
All right, well, we'll, I'll work with Jason, you can get in touch with them and see if potentially they can come in Wednesday, late morning or early afternoon, and speak to us, or if not, we'll look at a different time. We will relocate that twenty thousand dollars for now, so that it's, it can, or maybe, maybe depending, if we can't hear from them Wednesday, and if it's going to be after, we need to kind of have a cutoff for the official budget, we'll just put it in a different category until we can have that conversation. All right. I think that's good for today. In a half an hour, I will be over at Mary Potter talking to the school board about polling. So I will let you all know Wednesday, late morning, not before, how that's gone and. I don't. Bring us to our conclusion for today.
With it.
We're going to stay at recess until eight thirty on Wednesday morning. We can leave our. Breakfast at three, start at nine.